Councilors, please stand. Councilors, it's a new day. Please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Cassidy.
Thank you Chair. I wish to advise councillor Cook will be away for the duration of this meeting also and move that she be granted a leave of absence.
May I please have a second, sir?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk, that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. Any further apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham will be absent and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that councillor Cunningham be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councilors, I draw to your attention the item on the agenda, question, oh, excuse me, confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,643rd meeting held on Tuesday 16th March 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,643rd meeting of the council, held on Tuesday 16th of March 2021, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councilors, we will now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Adaman.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we have just spent today in a closed meeting discussing the possibility of the Olympics and Paralympics coming to Brisbane. Can you speak to any outcomes from this briefing and discussion?
To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, to councillor Adaman for the question. Well, it's been a long day. The meeting that we normally start at 2pm is starting at 6.30pm because since nine o'clock this morning, we have been in a special meeting specifically about the opportunity for Brisbane to host the 2032 Olympics. I'm pleased to report that after five hours of briefings and questions and answers and then another several hours of debate, we have a resolution that got the support of all councillors here except for one. Now, I held hopes that certain councillor that is in the Aussie green and gold today would be voting in favour of that resolution, but it turns out he's wearing green and gold for a different reason. But, look, it was good to see the support of all councils except one for this resolution to move to the next step. What happens now is we go ahead with the support of the legal advisers, the CEO and the chief legal counsel, to make sure that we negotiate a good outcome for the city of Brisbane. We heard some information about what that will involve in the briefing, to protect council's position, to protect the position of the ratepayers of Brisbane, but also to make sure that we're in a position to harvest the benefits for our city, for our region and for our state. And that is exactly what I believe will happen if we're successful in getting the Games. I do acknowledge councillor Shree's offer to help us with organising the Games, even though he voted against them. We'll take that offer under advisement, but, but, but from now, what we will see happen is on the 7th of April, all levels of government will come together and submit our final proposal to the IOC. They will then consider what we've put forward. There'll be an interactive process back and forward, further information that may be required from the IOC or questions. And that process will then culminate in a meeting in June, which sets the agenda for the IOC Executive Board meeting to be held two days out from the Tokyo Olympics. So this process, we expect, could result in Brisbane being named as the host city as early as July, two days before the Olympics. So, touch wood, that's what we're hoping for, that's the outcome we're hoping for, that's what we're working towards. And we're now on track with our council approvals in place to sign the dotted line, to move to the next step, and as I said, most importantly, to grasp hold of this opportunity with both hands. At the moment, we will see other councils going through their processes. We know that there are councils right across South East Queensland who will be asked to also sign up to particular arrangements, whether it's the Gold Coast, the Sunshine Coast, Ipswich, Redlands, Moreton Region, other councils around the region will also go through a process to do something similar to what we've done. State and federal governments will have their cabinet discussions on this matter, but we're all working to that same 7th of April deadline to submit our documents into the IOC. We've discussed elements of the master plan and venues that will be put forward. It has been pointed out that that master plan is still being finessed. It has also been pointed out that, once the document is submitted on the 7th of April, if we are successful in being named as the host city, over the next 11 years, there will be further finessing of that plan that will be done. That will be done in a collaborative way between all three levels of government and also with the IOC and the AOC. That process is, I guess, driven by the type of contract which the IOC is asking us to sign. A contract that is based on uniting principles, that is based on collaboration, that is based on reducing costs wherever possible, improving sustainability, improving the outcomes for host cities and regions, and also making sure that decisions are made in a way that is like an alliance. It's not, we are, we are the IOC, we will tell you exactly what we want you to do and we'll enter into no discussion. It is more of a alliance and collaborative approach. And that is important because that puts Brisbane in a good position, puts the region in a good position to be able to put our best foot forward and to harvest, as I said, the benefits that can be delivered from hosting the Olympic Games. Benefits like 130,000 jobs, benefits like bringing forward infrastructure, benefits like all three levels of government working together.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Murphy.
Chair, just a quick question. The temperature in the room seems to be quite high. I'm just wondering if you could look into that. I'm not sure if this is some kind of psyop, but yeah.
I live to serve, I will reduce the temperature. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I, I never thought I would say this, but you do, you do seem to have the air conditioning off for a change in here, Chair.
Look, as I say, I live, I exist to make you all happy and I will adjust the temperature.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, councillor Allen. Weeks ago, the Labor Opposition Team asked questions on notice on how much money this LMP administration had spent on graphics and fly-through animations of big CBD projects like Metro and Victoria Park. We were told, and I quote, "The request to identify conclusive costs associated with artist impressions and/or animations of projects would take considerable time." We also asked you many weeks ago about this. So it's now been six weeks since we were given that answer. You've had plenty of time to get those costings together. So my question, councillor Allen, I ask again, how much ratepayer funds has this LMP administration wasted on artist impression and fly-through of these inner-city projects?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Cassidy for the question. One thing I would say is that if he would like a little bit more information on that, councillor Murphy has very generously offered to give that to you. So if your interest is genuine, would you...
Not councillor, councillor Allen, two and three me, please.
If councillor Cassidy would like a bit more information on that, he can certainly have a chat to councillor Murphy. All eager at that.
Okay. Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
My question is to the Chair of City Planning Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, councillors recently opened consultation on a refresh of the city, city, sorry, city centre master plan. Can you outline for the chamber what this refresh means for our city?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you councillor Hammond for the question. I'm very excited to ensure that the chamber knows tonight about the city centre master plan refresh, considering with the 2032 Olympics, I'm going to say all but secured, but it is a critical time right now to build on the hard work that we did this afternoon to make sure we can take that step forward and unlock new opportunities for investment and renewal in our inner city. We know Brisbane is in the middle of a major growth spurt at the moment, which is fantastic after the last 12 months that we've had, and on the cusp of a once-in-a-generation boom within dwelling targets and population targets as well. And this city centre master refresh is about calling on the community to put forward fresh and innovative ideas to help write the next dynamic chapter of our city's evolution. We only have to look out over the skyline and see that the Brisbane city is a hive of activity with a series of major projects underway. More than 20 new towers, 11 hotel approvals, half a dozen student accommodation towers built or being built since the release of the last city centre master plan in 2014. And that plan was instrumental in getting these projects off the ground and securing record investment in transformative public infrastructure. Projects like Howard Smith Wolves, Queens Wharf, revitalising the city reach waterfront, the Edward Street Vision, the Knowledge Corridor, Brisbane Metro, Green Bridges and Victoria Park, they have all been huge economic drivers for our city, supported thousands of direct and indirect jobs, and is stimulating further investment in the city and injecting much-needed cash into our local economy. But despite those challenges from last year, there is still plenty of reasons to be upbeat about our future. We are not and will not be slowing down anytime soon, and now is the time, in fact, to hit the accelerator. So just as Brisbane is the economic powerhouse of Queensland economy, the CBD is the engine room when it comes to our city. Before coronavirus, we had over 120,000 workers based in the CBD. That's almost a quarter of the total economic value for the entire local government area. So expand this focus, we include key inner-city knowledge and lifestyle precincts, Bowen Hills, Fortitude Valley, West End, Wollongabba, and you then go up to 40% of our gross product in Brisbane. So we want to continue to build on these strengths, we want to grow new and innovative industries, health, technology, advanced manufacturing. We can expect to see more than 2,000 new residents and 360,000 skilled workers flock back to the inner city over the next decade. But we need to make sure that we are planning for this. It's exciting but a challenging period of growth, and at the same time, diversifying our offer and embracing changing lifestyles, market conditions and the reality of a VC world compared to the post-COVID world is what will see us emerge stronger and even more resilient. So even though we've had the impacts of the way we work, live and relax over the last 12 months, we still look to need to look at the ways that we connect, travel and do business. Will we ever return to normal operations or will some things just become the new normal, as we heard a few times today in our debate around the Olympics? It is a unique time for our city and why we have commenced our work on two key initiatives to help drive change and embrace innovation in the city. The first one is the Interaction Plan for Economic Development, to really talk about supporting the businesses and working through that. And the other one is our city centre master plan, where we will be following and outlining a proposed course of action for Brisbane's longer-term growth and development. This will lead eventually to a total amendment through the city centre master plan, but we need to take baby steps to make sure we're on the right track. None of us really know at this point of time what is going to be needed over the coming years. So feedback is going to be open until 20th of April, so please have your say. It's just an interim plan at the moment, so no idea is too big or too small. It is all about making sure that we can, in the end, have a solid plan to boost the recovery and create a blueprint for future city-shaping projects. Those feedback and ideas from the community are going to help craft a plan that makes us globally resilient but also locally responsive. And by acting quickly on this, within the next few weeks to hear back from people, we will be meeting with industry stakeholders to hear firsthand about some of their challenges and some of the opportunities they see facing Brisbane in the years to come. So right now is the call-out to the Brisbane community, to residents who live, work and relax in the city. We will continue to work closely with businesses, industry groups, organisations and residents to make sure that we leave a lasting legacy for generations to come.
Further questions? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Finance Administration, Small Business Committee, councillor Allen, and hopefully you won't deflect this one. Time to time, time and time again, you've refused to tell Brisbane residents how high you plan to hike their rates by come July. In a recent report, homeowners, homeowners are tipped to fall behind in their mortgage repayments as Jobkeeper ends. The last thing Brisbane homeowners need now is a second rates hike in a single year. With, with, this will cripple families and, and you don't even have the heart to tell them how much you're going to jack up their rates by, so they can plan ahead. Councillor Allen, why is this LMP administration so cruel?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I thank councillor Strunk for the question. And certainly, we've had a number of questions on what a rates increase might be in the coming budget, and it's been in this chamber pretty much continuously for the last four or five weeks. I do thank councillor Strunk for raising the issue of, of rates. I have pointed out in the past that we had a rates increase in July 2020 that was fully offset by the Kingsford Smith Drive savings, oh, sorry, the COVID rebate in the first half. So there was no rate increase then. We had an even better outcome where we provided a rebate on Kingsford Smith Drive in the second half of this financial year, and for most ratepayers, that actually has resulted in a reduction in general rates for this financial year. So this notion that there is two rates increases is demonstrably wrong, however, it doesn't suit the ALP's narrative and so they continue to push it, even though it's wrong. And as the Lord Mayor has said in this place, just because you keep perpetuating this and saying it, doesn't mean it's right. But now that councillor Strunk has opened the issue of rates increases, it's been some time since the ALP were on the, this side of the, the chamber, and so they may well have forgotten how the development of the budget works. We are right in the midst of budget development now. We are certainly looking at the revenue and expense outcomes for the council in the coming financial year. And so we are certainly undertaking a budget in a very difficult time. We certainly are conscious of any rates increases and the impact that it has on the residents of Brisbane. We've been monitoring people's ability to pay their rates during COVID, and pleasingly, in recent months, we've seen people go off their payment plans and find themselves in a position where they can pay their rates. In the context of rates increases, can I remind this chamber and the ratepayers of Brisbane, when the ALP was last in government, they raised rates by 6%. Not once, not twice, not three times, four times they raised rates by 6%.
Councillors, councillors, please.
Now, we will not be taking lectures from the opposition on rates increases. We will let the people of Brisbane know what the rates increase will be when the Lord Mayor hands down the budget on the 16th of June. We've been very, very clear about that, and I can't recall any administration who are handing down a budget who would have flagged or indicated a rates increase three months before the budget gets handed down. You know, these guys have really been on the wrong side of the chamber for so long, they've forgotten how the budget development process works. So in answer to councillor Strunk's question, we are sympathetic to the challenges that the ratepayers of Brisbane face, but we also know that we've got a growing city, we need to support the, the growth of that city and the infrastructure and services that the community demands. And in the context of his question, he'll just have to wait until the budget's handed down.
Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question tonight is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, this week marks the one-year anniversary of the elected Shrinna Council administration. Can you please highlight for the benefit of the chamber some of the great achievements from the last 12 months in the public and active transport portfolio, please?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, I can, councillor Owen, and thank you through you, Chair, councillor Owen, for the question, because looking back at the year in review, it's amazing just how much this administration has delivered in terms of the current suite of transport projects we are working on. Now, since the election, the last 12 months have shown us that this council can pivot, we can adjust and we can adapt. We have had to overcome massive challenges due to COVID and the budgetary issues associated with the recovery, and state government intractability. And through it all, we are triumphing, we are progressing the agenda of the Lord Mayor and the agenda of this city, Mr Chair. Where those opposite have found despair and hopelessness, we have led the way to power forward, to make Brisbane a more resilient and vibrant city, to supercharge and invest in our city, and most importantly, Chair, to keep Brisbane moving. Now, there is no better way to keep our city moving than to upgrade, renew and to create public and active transport, and making the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. Now, Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna and I are very proud to be able to champion award-winning projects like the Brisbane Metro. This is the biggest public transport project tackled by a local government in Australia. And Brisbane Metro is now off the starting blocks. The Director General of Transport and Main Roads finally signed off on the state project deed and the construction interface deed in the second half of last year to get Brisbane Metro underway. Since then, the Metro project has won a Metropolitan Innovation Award at the city's Power Partnership Climate Awards, so award-winning Metro project. Metro keeps kicking goals for the tender now being announced for the design and delivery of the Metro Depot awarded to award-winning tender Adco Constructions last month, that will support 170 local jobs with earthworks to start midway through this year. We're keeping things moving with the largest investment in active transport the city has ever seen, in excess of $400 million. We've fast-tracked the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Green Bridge with procurement activities now well underway. Of course, the Victoria Bridge has transitioned to a green bridge in January this year, which marked a key moment in this administration's vision for the inner city with improved public realm and active transport connections. Chair, they said it couldn't be done, it has been done, under the Shrinna administration. Now, the Indrapilly River Walk is also now on the cusp of completion, significantly improving active transport out in the Western Suburb. We're very pleased to go and open that soon. Now, the Citylink cycleway trial has commenced with two-way separated bike lanes along Elizabeth Street and Edward Street, and alignment along Victoria Bridge to be opened very soon. And let's hope, Chair, that this terrible weather doesn't hold it off any much longer. Delivering this missing link has been a massive step forward in expanding our city's active transport network, providing healthy and safe transport options for Brisbane residents, visitors and commuters. Of course, we know CityCycle played a very important role in how our city moved for more than a decade, and it was a very successful scheme for its time that delivered important last-mile transport solutions for Brisbane. But we have made the decision to end CityCycle in the last year in favour of a new enhanced e-bike offering, and that's going to be a tremendous outcome for ratepayers and for visitors to our city. It will save us money and it will scoot us into the future when it comes to our e-mobility transport leadership in this country. And speaking of e-mobility leadership, we're also the first city to develop an e-mobility strategy, so we take our city towards a more modern, sustainable and better-connected future, taking advantage of the extensive network of pathways and bikeways that deliver last-mile travel in our city. Labor let them rot under their watch, we are building the best system of footpaths and bikeways our city has ever seen. Of course, the e-mobility tender for e-bikes and e-scooters is now closed and evaluations are now underway. Chair, a fantastic outcome for anyone who chooses active travel in our humid subtropical city. Our continued investment in transformative infrastructure, bikeways, river walks and green bridges helps to drive that e-mobility uptake, improving safety and public confidence in active travel. And of course, Chair, not till he buses out, our e-bus trial is due to start on the Cityloop midway through this year. It's just another way this administration demonstrates our ongoing commitment to improved environmental outcomes for the city, but also delivering the outcomes that our city needs in terms of sustainability. Now, on the river, we have our second double-decker CityCat Neville Bonner launched in the second half of 2020, and CityCat 24 isn't far away. Kitty cats are purring away after having made a very tough decision to remove the monoholes from the river. We've been able to work with River City Ferries to provide a new mode of ferry to bridge the gap while we work to get the monoholes back on the river. Chair, when it comes to transport, we have absolutely hit the ground running when it comes to the last year. Instead of finding fault and putting up roadblocks, we are delivering services, finding clean, green and sustainable solutions for this city.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Any further questions? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your administration has previously acknowledged concerns about residential homes being used for short-term accommodation, even though the dwellings were originally planned, designed and approved as long-term housing for local residents. Council has even taken complaints-driven enforcement action in a small number of cases where the use conflicted with the city plan. But there are thousands of dwellings, particularly in the inner city, that the city plan already allows to be converted into short-term accommodation, raising serious concerns that rent gouging and the conversion of residential homes will lead to worsening in housing insecurity and the displacement of more and more low-income renters. So what further steps will you take to ensure that both major events like the Olympics and the ongoing increase in trend in tourism numbers doesn't lead to low-income renters becoming homeless? What's to stop all the new residential developments in our city becoming short-term tourist accommodation rather than stable housing for locals?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the, thank you for the question, councillor Shree, through you, Mr Chair. Look, I'm aware of councillor Shree's concerns in this respect, and certainly there is a challenge for all major cities to decide how we adapt and respond to new technologies that emerge or new business opportunities that emerge, such as Airbnb or equivalent online platforms that allow people to rent out their home for short-term use. We, we saw similar things when it came to people being able to have an online platform that allowed them to rent out their car space for online use. Just because you can do it, doesn't mean it's lawful. And that's obviously the challenge here. There are some cases where it may be lawful and there are other, plenty more cases where it is not lawful. And so some residents are falling into the trap of putting their properties on these platforms, not being aware that it is unlawful. And as councillor Shree pointed out, we do pursue compliance of those cases that we are aware of. But, like any new emerging business opportunity, the question is how to respond to it appropriately and what's the appropriate response? Now, I'll give you an example, because it's also disruptive technology, e-scooters. A lot of cities originally just said, "No, you can't have these scooters." And we were the first council in Australia that said, "Yes. Yes, if you meet these requirements." And so councils, when it comes to short-term accommodation providers like Airbnb, for example, we also have to continue to adapt our response. Now, some cities like New York, I am aware, have completely banned any of those short-term accommodation providers. If you want to go to New York and stay, you must stay in a hotel. You can't use an Airbnb-type provider, that is illegal. And so I know that council here in Brisbane, our position will continue to evolve as the community adapts. One thing I do know, though, is that there is demand for people to use these apps, these platforms, and there is demand from property owners to get involved in the platform. So we need to discover and decide and evolve our position on this as we go forward, and that's a process that I'd appreciate the input of all councils on. Because I can tell you, it's one thing to raise concerns about Airbnb, but hands up in the room, who's actually used Airbnb themselves? I have. Not in Brisbane, I haven't used Airbnb in Brisbane, but certainly in other cities, in other places, I have used Airbnb. So, you know, there is demand for these kind of facilities and demand for these platforms. We need to find the right balance. So I do know that if you're interested in housing affordability, which you do appear to be genuinely interested in, you can work with us and, and provide feedback on what the appropriate way to go forward in terms of, what's the appropriate city response in terms of these platforms? Should they be banned? Or should there be a different approach? Should it be allowed in certain areas, in certain circumstances? So I know that Brisbane, like other cities, is currently grappling with that trap, with that challenge and with that, you know, I guess, issue that has arisen. I know that in some cases, it can be a small number of people ruining it for everyone else. So there are plenty of good tenants that might come in and use an Airbnb-type facility and they'll be...
and they'll be quiet, and they won't have loud parties, they won't disrupt the neighbourhood, but there are also a small number of people that will ruin it for everyone else. And I can understand that residents would have legitimate concerns when that happens, but it doesn't mean that everyone that uses Airbnb is just coming in to destroy a neighbourhood and not caring about the amenity or livability of that area. So councillor Shree, you raised a legitimate issue. We need to continue to adapt and evolve our response when it comes to this particular issue, and I appreciate you being part of the debate when it comes to how we should go forward on this particular matter, bearing in particular mind what other cities are doing. And there's a spectrum there that I mentioned before of different approaches across different cities to this particular challenge. Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, our popular Brisbane Greeters program has now kicked off night tours for residents and visitors to Brisbane. Can you update the chamber on the Greeters' fresh new look and how we are offering more to see and do?
councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thank you councillor Landers for the opportunity to talk about Brisbane Greeters. And I think everyone in the chamber knows that these are one of my favourite parts of council, and I hear councillor Cumming through you, Mr Chair, councillor Cumming also agreeing with me because we had, as you know, a fantastic walk with the Greeters, and it really is, it really is a program, I think, that is what Brisbane is all about, the friendliness of the city. So I also know that we're very excited to hear that our Walter Taylor Bridge tours are coming back as well as our nighttime ones. And our Greeters are certainly excited to be sharing the interesting history behind Australia's only habitable bridge once again, after their popular bridge tours were put on hold for more than a year due to the COVID restrictions. And for decades, the Walter Taylor Bridge was home to the Green family, who lived in the tower for more than 70 years after the bridge's first-ever tollmaster, Mort Green, moved in in 1936. After the last of the Green family moved out in 2009, no one had lived inside the bridge. And now everyone can see for themselves what it's like inside Australia's first and only habitable bridge, with our popular Brisbane Greeters tour kicking off again on the 3rd of April. Our Greeters are very excited to be sharing this unique and interesting history again with our residents and visitors, and it seems that they're not the only ones with tours booked out until June. So I hope that you made the time to book yourself in for a tour after the committee last week, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Landers and to everyone else in the chamber. And I know that councillor Mackay's already been out there with the Lord Mayor. And here's a very interesting, fun fact for you all. The Lord Mayor went to school with one of the Green children. So you best get in quick. I'm sure that the Greeters are going to use that bit of information in their tour, Lord Mayor, because through you, Mr Chair, one of the things that we discovered, of course, when we went on the walk with the tours, how everybody wants to contribute to the walks and contribute to the history, and they're constantly adding to the narrative that they take on those tours. So it really is something that's extra special. So councillor Landers mentioned that we're also very excited to be launching our first ever Brisbane Greeter night tours next month as well. These brand-new night tours will run in the inner city, including South Bank, and we're looking forward to revealing some more details about this in the coming weeks. So stay tuned on council's website for more information. Another exciting addition to our Brisbane Greeters program is our suburban tours, which are all about bringing people out of the suburbs and exploring all that Brisbane has to offer, and this is something that our Greeters are also very excited about. We've already kicked off tours in Tenerife, New Farm, Paddington, Bullimber and Lunda, and we're excited to add more in the future. And I know that councillor Cumming is keen to have some greets in his ward out at Wyndham, and I really thank councillor Cumming for contacting us about that, because it really is what our committee is about, and it was an opportunity.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Look, I object to councillor Howard trying to give me the kiss of death.
No, yeah. Not a point of order, councillor Howard.
Well, I thought it was a great opportunity for residents at Wyndham to find out a little bit more about the suburbs, so it really is great that that's happening. This has all been made possible by our wonderful volunteers, of which we have over 100 of Brisbane's most passionate and dedicated residents who volunteer their time to share their love of this great city with friends, residents and visitors. And some of our volunteers have been with us since the very beginning, more than 10 years ago. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our wonderful Brisbane Greeter volunteers, and as the Lord Mayor said, our Greeters play such an important role in sharing the story and spirit of Brisbane with residents and visitors alike, and we are so proud to now have them under our wing as an official part of council. As part of bringing the Greeters under council's wing, we have rolled out a brand-new uniform which our Greeters love, including new t-shirts, hats and umbrellas in our city's colours of blue and gold. They are proud to be representing our city, and even more so now with their lovely new uniforms. It was great to join councillors Cumming, Landers, Mackay and Toomey for a special 30-minute tour with our Greeters just last week or the week before. And our Brisbane Greeters are, of course, completely free, and our Greeters love taking requests. So if you're interested in something, you can let us know and we can help make your tour special.
councillor Howard, your time has expired. Any further questions? councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, my question is to councillor Marks, the Chair of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee. Councillor Marks, it's been almost a year now since you and your LNP colleagues cancelled curbside collection. Without warning, the community service was ripped from Brisbane residents. The LNP council claimed it couldn't afford it, but then somehow found $132 million to buy the Sherwood Bus Depot. Your leader could also find $5.2 million to spend on the Living in Brisbane newsletter with his face on it. Councillor Marks, this LNP administration could afford curbside collection all along. Why don't you stop kidding yourself, admit you got it wrong and bring back curbside collection now?
councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Through you, I thank councillor Cumming for the question. Look, the answer's not going to change from what it was last week, last month, two months ago, six months ago, nine months ago. The answer is still the same. It's when the Lord Mayor, as we said, is in the middle of doing the budget, councillor Allen has also reiterated that today, that officers have been working behind the scenes for many, many, many hours, getting the budget sorted. And once that is done, and we will know exactly where we stand financially, then an announcement will be made. So just stay tuned.
Further questions?
A point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council immediately reinstates curbside collection.
All right, I have an urgency resolution proposed by councillor Cassidy.
He's quick off the mark tonight.
Second by councillor Cumming. Do we have that?
I just emailed that through.
All right, we will distribute that in a moment. Councillor Cassidy, you've got three minutes. If you can just bear with us one moment, we'll reset your clock. There it is, three minutes, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. This is an important issue for our city. This is the 10th opportunity this chamber has had to say this Lord Mayor has done the wrong thing in cutting curbside collection, and this is the 10th opportunity we've had to reverse this terrible cut for our community.
Point of order.
To urgency, nothing urgent that I've heard so far. In fact, he's demonstrating, he's done it so many times before that it's not urgent.
We won't debate points of order.
The Lord Mayor...
As always, please leave your comments to urgency.
I was trying to keep it brief, Chair. I'll be very, I'll be very brief and I'll tell you why this is urgent. This is the last meeting before we go into a long recess. If this administration can find money to continue to advertise itself month in, month out, it can find money to purchase the Sherwood Bus Depot, and now we can find money to run the Olympics, we can find money right now to reinstate curbside collection. And I say to the Lord Mayor, Chair, it is the right thing to do for our city.
On the matter of urgency, all those who believe this matter to be urgent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Councillors, may I also like to thank, no, please keep ringing the bells. Please thank the team here at City Hall who have overridden the air conditioning and returned it to us. And for all those people who complained about the cold, trust it, you've now learned how bad it could be the other way, all right? Councillors, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Let's read the result when you're ready, please.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 18 against.
The noes have it. Further questions? We return to question time. The rules obligate me to...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the rules obligate me to go...
I was very busy.
No, no, the rules obligate me to go side to side. That's the preservative rule.
I was blowing my nose.
So, as I say, the rules obligate me to go side to side, and so councillor Atwood.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, we are proud to host the brightest minds from across the world again this year, with the World Science Festival kicking off in Brisbane from tomorrow. Can you outline what exciting workshops and talks we can expect this year?
councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and this question is urgent because the World Science Festival does kick off tomorrow. And if the last 12 months have taught us anything, it is that science plays an incredibly important role in our day-to-day lives. More than that, it does have the potential to unlock many of today's global challenges, from combating the coronavirus and developing vaccines to pursuing environmental sustainability and using technology to develop new ways to build and innovate. We are now in its sixth year, and Minister Enoch and I commented on that, that we have been at the opening of everyone for the last six years together, and 2021 World Science Festival is bigger and better than ever before and the only one in the world this year, because the only other place it's held is in New York and it is not being held this 12 months. So we are bringing not only the biggest and best and boldest from around Australia, but also around the world due to new technology, here to Brisbane for a jam-packed program over five exciting days. There'll be big ideas, daring conversations, and all of it'll be happening at that main stage, with more than 120 events planned across 10 venues. There's something from everyone, young and old, leading scientists to just curious enthusiasts. And it's not just science, we're talking technology, engineering, arts and mathematics, because we all know that STEM has turned into steam, and it's all very inclusive now when it comes to science. Bringing learning out of the classroom and onto the streets is the focus and always has been for World Science Festival, which gives everyone the opportunity to learn, no matter what your age is, ask questions and hear from global experts and be inspired. But the idea is to be challenged and to challenge, and there's no other event you can go from surfing the universe with Dr Carl to talking about science behind beer while you're having a beer in the nucleus, the bar being a new addition to this year's festival. It is a stellar lineup of audience favourites and industry leaders. Wendy Zuckerman, creator and host of one of my favourite podcasts, Science Versus, I'd like to thank the officers for the technology of overriding the air conditioning as I'm speaking. Corey Tupp, the First Nations scientist, CEO and founder of Deadly Science. And with 2030 space tourism apparently on the cards, Richard Gariot will be joining a panel discussion to share with us his experience going into outer space. There is a wide range of free events, some will be at cost, but most of them will be a reasonable price, just like most major events these days. It is also set up as a hybrid event. I mentioned for the first time this year, the festival will have a bar, the nucleus, which will be set up outside the Queensland Museum, which may get a different clientele to study how beer is made and maybe drunk. But also other venues include our iconic planetarium at Mount Cootha Botanic Gardens, Cupac, the Queensland Herbarium and a range of other locations around the city and suburbs. We have a proud and celebrated history of science in Brisbane, and we have produced some of the world's leading scientists. Professor Ian Fraser, recognised as a co-inventor of technology that produced the HPV vaccines now used worldwide to help prevent the development of cervical cancer. Professor Dorothy Hill, the first female president of the Australian Academy of Science, a graduate of Cooperu State School. And we're extremely pleased to be able to host this international festival again. In fact, as I said, the only extension of the event outside New York. With a strong and growing innovation-led economy and an enviable outdoor lifestyle, summer and winter, there really is no better place to host this fantastic event. The benefits to us as a city are immense. It showcases Brisbane on the world stage as a bustling Asia-Pacific hub dedicated to science and education. Let's not forget, in line with this, we have the arts aspect of this, which is Curiosity, which I know that councillor Howard's team has been working closely with, which is an enormous outdoor gallery of installations relating to science and art that hopefully, if the weather clears up, people will be able to actually enjoy them. And off the back of the previous question we had, the Greeters will be able to show you around the Curiosity installations as well, if you want a little bit more detailed information as well. It is a major event in our events calendar. It is a valuable and welcome boost to our local economy, tourism, hospitality and retail. In 2019, we saw 90,000 visitors, probably not what we'll see this year, and it injected 11 million into the economy. This year, we are just hoping to stay connected with people from around the world, inspire the next generation to get involved in science, explore new ideas and tackle some of the big issues. Over the next five days, can I encourage everyone to share the things on your social media with your community so they can learn something new and exciting about our city? The website is there to fill a full list of events. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Yeah, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Johnston.
It is mine. Excellent. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I hope you're listening. Earlier... Yes, thank you, I see your hand on your ear. We take that as the universal symbol of listening. Earlier today, you said you agreed with the intent of my motion, which would establish a multi-party standing committee to oversight communications and transparent dialogue about the progress of the Olympics in Brisbane to 2032. But you and your LNP colleagues actually voted against it. You said that you would be prepared to appoint members of the opposition...
councillor Johnston, I just have to intervene a little bit here. That was a closed meeting, so can I just ask you not to... You can't direct quote from it?
It was an open meeting where we voted on the resolution, Mr Chair.
Yeah, but the debate itself that you're about to refer to was in the closed part.
No, we voted on the motion, which was in an open meeting, and the record of it is on the record.
Yes, but I suspect you're about to start quoting. So like I say, you can talk about the votes, but you can't talk about, you can't quote what happened inside the meeting, because it was a closed meeting. So councillor Johnston, please continue.
Yeah, thank you. It's on the record how the Lord Mayor voted, and it's a matter of public record, Mr Chairman. My question, which you interrupted, is will you agree to appoint councillor Shree and myself to this committee, along with other members of the ALP and the LNP, to ensure that all political parties and myself as an independent are included in the standing committee?
Lord Mayor.
So the nature of my comments in the meeting were part of the closed meeting, but I did indicate, because it doesn't relate specifically to the confidential Olympic matters that we were discussing, this is a separate council process, that I said I'm happy to repeat what I said in an open forum, and I will do that now. So my commitment is that if we are successful in becoming the host city for the Olympic Games, potentially as early as July, that we will establish a committee of council to, which includes the oversight of the Olympics. I also pointed out that we have multiple standing committees of council to include the oversight of a range of things that we do, all of council's business, and there should definitely be a committee that includes the oversight of the Olympics. So that is my commitment. That committee should have a representation across this chamber from both sides. Now, councillor Johnston appears to be caught up in the argument about specifically who is on that committee. I don't know who will be on that committee, but like our other committees, there will be a... but like our other committees, there will be a selection of councillors from both sides of the chamber. And that's all I can commit to at this time, but certainly going forward, if we are successful in becoming the host city, then we will establish a committee with oversight of the Olympics, and that committee will be represented by both sides of the chamber. And so I did mention that in the closed meeting, happy to repeat that now on the record.
That concludes question time. As Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 15th of March.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 15th of March, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. The report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 15th of March, 2021, be adopted. Is it in debate, the Lord Mayor?
Yes, Mr Chair. Today, the Victoria and Story Bridges Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha and Radcliffe Place will be lit in red to support World Science Festival, councillor Adams. We've heard about the World Science Festival earlier in the meeting from councillor Adams, the Deputy Mayor. Wednesday, tomorrow, marks World Tuberculosis Day, and the day highlights the global epidemic of tuberculosis, TB, and the efforts made to eliminate the disease. To show our support, Radcliffe Place sculptures, Victoria and Story Bridges, Tropical Dome and Brisbane City Hall will be also lit in red, but for a different reason. On Thursday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit in blue and white. Can anyone guess why that is?
Unification Day?
Greek Independence Day, yes. So it's the 200th anniversary of Greek independence. So we know that Brisbane has a big Greek community, and there are lots of celebrations and commemorations and events happening around this time. But on Thursday, we will be lighting up the Story and Victoria Bridges in blue and white to celebrate 200 years of Greek independence. On Friday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridges, Radcliffe Place sculptures and Tropical Dome will be lit in purple to support the Day for Epilepsy. And for 50 years, Epilepsy Queensland has been dedicated to improving quality of life of people with epilepsy and their carers and families. And Purple Day is a worldwide campaign dedicated to increasing awareness and understanding of epilepsy. Just did want to cover a couple of issues that came up in the question time. We saw yet again another fake urgency motion on a matter that had been put forward now 10 times. And I've stated this before, but it is just a cynical part of Labour's strategy, who know curbside collection is coming back? Why? Because we've always said it is coming back, to try and cynically claim the credit for it coming back, as though we've only buckled because they've put so much pressure on. What a joke that is. What a joke that is. Fake urgency motions do not equal curbside coming back, curbside collection coming back. What will bring curbside collection back is allocating the funding and finding the funding in the budget. Now, we've also heard a fake claim that we could somehow afford to buy the Sherwood Depot, so, you know, we can buy anything. We made it clear that the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation is buying the Sherwood Depot, not council, City of Brisbane Investment Corporation. And so they will be taking possession of that asset, and we will be receiving the funding for that. And so...
Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard. Silence, Lord Mayor.
So this idea that somehow, because of the Sherwood Bus Depot arrangement, which is financially advantageous to the ratepayers of Brisbane and to Brisbane City Council, that somehow we can afford everything, is not correct. And another claim was made where a figure was raised about the cost of living in Brisbane. Wrong, wrong. We've heard all types of figures. It's funny, because when Labour councillors get carried away, the figures get bigger and bigger and bigger. And I remember, it culminated in a claim by Labour's Lord Mayor or candidate in the election, that we had spent $85 million on brochures for Brisbane Metro. Now, that would have been a significant amount of brochures, 85 million on brochures. So we see Labour councillors and Labour candidates get very excited, and they throw figures out, most of which are wrong. But the reality is, I'll answer the question that councillor Cassidy asked, I think it was to councillor Adam Allen. He asked how much money has been wasted on fly-throughs and mock-ups? Well, I can tell you, not one single dollar has been wasted on any of those things, because they are important engagement tools for the community. Because if you want the community to be involved in a project, if you want the community to have their say in a project, you know what helps? Them knowing what it will look like, them knowing what we're talking about. And I've got to say, you can get a certain amount of things crossing words, but a picture tells a thousand words. And so people knowing what Victoria Park could look like under our new master plan, people knowing what the Brisbane Metro will look like, people knowing what the green bridges will look like, people knowing...
Councillors, please allow councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy, please cease interjecting. Please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
So people knowing those things, people seeing with their own eyes, is an important part of the engagement process. It's an important part of the community being informed. And so not one dollar has been wasted on those things, because they're important communication tools. And also, Labour councillors can ask every week what the rates might be in the next budget, but the next budget has not been set. So they know, they know, they know this is the answer, they know this is the answer, but they insist on asking the same question, even though they know what the answer is, and even though it's been answered multiple times before. But what I can say is that Brisbane City Council will continue to, and the Shrinra administration will continue, to manage projects, to deliver infrastructure, and to make sure that we invest the ratepayers' money to the maximum benefit of the ratepayers themselves, of the City of Brisbane. And, you know, their much criticised project, KSD, Kingston Smith Drive, we heard today just how important that project will be in the future of the city, particularly if we are successful in getting the Games. It will be the critical link between one particular potential venue and another one. So there are some very good reasons that we invest in infrastructure. And while Labour can continue to criticise that investment, we are proud of that investment, because it is important for a growing city, and will continue to do the right thing by the people of Brisbane. That brings me to item A, which is the Nudgee Recreation Reserve District Sports Park. Now, we will continue to invest in improving sporting facilities, sports parks, parkland and green space right across the city. And this includes in Nudgee Recreation Reserve. It will be Brisbane's latest multi-sports hub, serving the north-eastern suburbs. It's a major project, which will re-establish the site on Elliot Road as a district-level sport and recreation precinct. The reserve has a long history, dating back to the 1940s, with evidence of cricket and football playing, being played on the site back to those days. In the 1970s, the reserve was used as a landfill, and this project is about remediating the site to bring the sport and recreation purpose back. So this is a great outcome for the community, taking what is an old landfill site, doing the work that is needed to provide new sporting facilities for the community, new recreational facilities. It will also include new park facilities for locals, including a new picnic playground area, barbecues, a dog-off-leash area, exercise equipment and even a BMX track. So this is a project we're all very excited about, and just another example that our investment in parks across Brisbane is across Brisbane. It's not focused on just one park, it's focused right across the city, upgrading parks in different parks of the city, in different suburbs, different locations, serving different populations of Brisbane that continue to grow and continue to appreciate this investment. Now, item B is, relates to the sale or transfer of surplus land to City of Brisbane Investment Corporation. Now, I know Labour councillors just don't like CBIC. I know that they would prefer it to be shut down. And if we had to listen... Sorry, if we had to, if we did what they said and shut it down, when they started calling for us to shut it down many years ago, the fund wouldn't have grown in size, the fund wouldn't have sent significant dividends back to council, which can be reinvested in things like green space and parkland. But also, here, we see two great opportunities...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
May for an extension, second.
Excuse me. An extension of time has been moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, further 10 minutes.
I can promise you it won't be a further 10 minutes. But here we have two great opportunities for CBIC to take possession of the land and then to partner with the NDIS to deliver assisted living homes for people in need. And so there are two blocks of land that will be used for this purpose. And we know the NDIS scheme is a national disability insurance scheme, all about supporting people to have those services in assisted living that they may not have previously had access to before. And the benefit of CBIC doing this is that they're getting a good social outcome, as well as council receiving a good financial outcome. And any dividends that come back from this land will obviously go back into the Green Future Fund, which exists to support renewed and increased investment in green space across the city. So I think it's a win-win. It's about providing a type of housing that is in need, it's about providing a type of housing that supports vulnerable people in our community, and it's about making sure that the benefits of that development go back to the community through the Green Future Fund. So I commend that item to the chamber, item B. Item C is the amendment to the Significant Contracting Plan for the Microsoft Digital Business Platform. This relates to an SCP which was approved by full council on the 3rd of February. The tender was released on the 17th of February. Since such time, councillors received feedback from the market, including from Microsoft itself. The feedback was specifically related to Microsoft licensing and the mandatory criteria noted as MO1, which deals with accreditation and the ability to provide licensing. Council has considered the market feedback and responded by removing part of the mandatory requirement, stating that council may consider part offers and simplifying joint offers, the joint offers requirement. By making these changes, council considers there to be more competitive offers made. So this is about adapting to market feedback so that we can get the best possible outcome for council. I commend this item to the chamber. Item D relates to the sponsorship policy. The sponsorship policy was last approved by council on the 11th of August 2003. Was anyone here there? Actually, a couple of people were here in 2003. I certainly wasn't. But since last approved, the policy has had several updates approved by council's executive management team, and there are several process and housekeeping, for lack of a better word, improvements in this policy, which will ultimately, I believe, be of benefit. Item E is the Proposed Advertising Devices Local Law. And the purpose of this item is to propose the making of a new advertising devices local law. The local law will repeal and replace existing advertisements local law and advertisement subordinate local laws. The new local law will modernise our regulations and better ensure that advertising devices in Brisbane are located, designed and operated in accordance with reasonable community expectations. We're a responsive council, and it was in response to community concern that the advertisements interim local law was introduced in November last year. We call it the Matic Law Internal. The interim local law prohibits high-impact electronic billboards in locations of character across the city. For these provisions to continue to have effect, we must go through the full local lawmaking process, which includes public consultation. So what I'm stating now is that we are starting an official local lawmaking process, combining a local law and a subordinate local law. There will be public consultation, and this will come back to the chamber before final approval. So we will see all of this stuff again, we will see the outcome of the community consultation, and we will also go through a process of state interest check and approval as well. So we're starting a process, it still has a bit of a way to go, but this submission allows that process to kick off. I think I've covered all the items, Mr Chair. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. And I wonder where the artist impressions for cuts to curbside collection and cuts to the Norman Park fair are, and double rates hikes and artist impressions and fly-throughs on things like that. But then the Lord Mayor just confirmed in his opening remarks that council's advertising strategy is entirely political one, because he never advertises the cuts that he makes to community services. He just confirmed that.
Councillor Cassidy, can I just bring you back on to the report at hand, please?
Thanks, Chair. I'll speak to all these items alphabetically, starting from the top. So starting at the Significant Contracting Plan for the Nudgee Recreation Reserve District Sports Park, the LNP have been in charge of the council budget for 17 years now, so it's finally good to finally see some work happening at this site now. However, what is concerning is that no early works have been done to mitigate some significant risks here on this site. We know from the papers, and the Lord Mayor, this was a dump site at one point. There is something down there underneath that topsoil, and it's probably a fairly thin layer of that. So something is bound to go wrong with this project, and that has been identified in the council papers before us today. So there is the, there are the five Ps, Chair. I can only say four of them, of course, from your earlier rulings precludes me from saying one of those, but preparation prevents poor performance. And what we're seeing here before us today is something that has well and truly failed the Kingston Smith Drive test. That early work wasn't done by council on that project, which resulted in almost 100% of that enormous contingency being eaten up by extra work and a 12-month delay on that project. And what we know is that there is a multimillion-dollar contingency on this project, and there is a high risk of unforeseen work that will need to be done, and that is called latent conditions such as changes in documented contamination profile. And what that means is council has not done the early works to know what the additional costs on this project will be, and have had to factor in a significant contingency that will no doubt be eaten up. And this is what happens, Chair, when this administration and the LNP model of hollowing out council's full-time engineering team and so many other areas of council, but in this case, the civil engineering team here in council. We should have a robust, experienced team to be able to do these works before we put these projects out to market. It would have mitigated the risks on a large project like Kingston Smith Drive, and it would mitigate the risks on a project like this one. So no matter how many cost blowouts, no matter how many delays on projects we see as a result of this Lord Mayor's political decisions, he never seems to learn, Chair, and he continues to plough along. So we are worried about the impacts on ratepayers for this project, and it's never the contractor that is at risk when, in this instance, we've built in a contingency to pay for those extra works that will probably need to be factored in at some point. The risk is all on the ratepayer, and that's been built into this project. So that is another reason why I think we need an overhaul of the way in which these projects are procured, and an overhaul of the way in which this administration has been continuing to outsource work. Claws B is these two asset sales. They're not really, because they are being transferred to a council-owned company. When the Lord Mayor says council isn't buying something or isn't selling something because it's to CBIC, therein lies the point. And particularly before on the Sherwood Bus Depot discussion, that... that CBIC is a 100% owned company of council. So, but what we do know is that it is a investment property development company largely. And I suppose this, this confirms that. And we also all know how CBIC operates. Council flogs off items, whether they are, you know, large buildings or, or other things to CBIC. And then in turn, if they decide to, they can flog them off to the private, to the private market as well. And, and, and all those bad decisions are kept at arm's length from, from the Lord Mayor in term, and politically in terms of those decisions. And what CBIC does in this instance, and so many others, is add a layer of complexity to trick rate payers and hide what is really going on. And you just have to look at the numbers at CBIC in terms of the dividend that's coming back to council to know that this is becoming quite a sham. In one financial year, rate payers paid $15.5 million in rent to CBIC for properties that council sold to CBIC and then rented back. And in that same year, rate payers only received a $15 million dividend back. Not the $20 million dividend that the, that the Lord Mayor crowes about for this so-called Green Fund that he talks about. We paid last year $15.5 million to CBIC for rent on properties we used to own and never paid any rent on. And we got $500,000 less back as a dividend in that same year. So that doesn't sound like a very good deal to me when it comes to a, a money go-round, a shuffle-go-round of money. So we, we know, we know as well, from so many promises this Lord Mayor makes, that you really can't take too many of those, too many of those seriously. So it says here, there's an intention, there's an intention that this land is, is to be developed for NDIS housing. I was a little concerned with what the Lord Mayor said, that, and it was something that wasn't in the papers, but he said that the, the sale of this land to CBIC and then the development of this housing will, will increase the dividend or go, or the profits of that will go towards the dividend to council. I didn't think, I, I don't think it's right that council makes a profit out of NDIS housing or that CBIC does. It's probably not appropriate. I know that, you know, the private sector that works in, in the, in the disability space might develop properties that then, you know, adds to the property profile that it has. But for council to, and for the Lord Mayor to stand up and hear and say that this is going to be good because it's going to provide an income to council, I don't think really aligns very well with, with what we should be doing as a, as a, as a level of government. So we know that, that the intention there is to, is to have NDIS housing on these sites. We also know that the Lord Mayor's intentions on a whole lot of things really can't be believed. His intention was to deliver the metro for 944 million. It's now over $1.2 billion. We know that he, he didn't intend to cut public transport services, but he went ahead and did it. He didn't intend to cut curbside collection.
I appreciate you building an argument, councillor Cassidy. But can I ask you just to come back to the topic, please?
So we know his intentions are set over here and then his actions often are over here and they are miles apart. So we, we have concerns about that. You know, if these are developed into NDIS housing, that is a good thing. But we want to make sure that that actually happens and council isn't profiting off this project as well. Although I, I don't think council will, given CBIC's return to council is less than the rent in which we are paying them to rent buildings that we used to own ourselves. So not much to see here, I don't think, in terms of a return to council, Chair. Clause C, the Amendment to Significant Contracting Plan for the Microsoft Digital Business Platform. Now, this is another IT clanger, another IT mistake that this administration has made. And the Lord Mayor didn't, didn't touch too much on that. But the reason, the reason that we have to discuss this item and, and, and vote in favour of this amendment to the Significant Contracting Plan is that council's ability in the IT space to actually properly manage these projects has been hollowed out. Just imagine if we didn't, we didn't sack 55 IT workers and then contract their jobs out. And then all of a sudden, at every, every point where we try and enter a new IT contract, we have huge cost blowouts and massive mistakes. And we have to have the private sector come back to council and say, you have so badly managed this tender process that you have to, you have to amend it entirely, just to make sure that we can actually have some tenderers come forward to deliver these, to deliver these projects. So again, just in one E and C here, we have a couple of really big clangers when it comes to the culture of contracting out in this council and the added costs that that is then putting on to the rate payers of Brisbane. The sponsorship policy, Chair, is something that we support. And we support sponsorship generally for the community. But this kind of expenditure should be above reproach. And we should make sure that we have a policy and a set of guidelines that ensures that that kind of expenditure, which is very discretionary and very behind closed doors, certainly leaves nothing to the imagination. So every time a councillor signs off on spending money, such as the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, it's made publicly available.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
I'd like to move an extension of time.
Can you please, councillor Griffiths, I'd like to do it, but please come inside there. Okay, I'll take it from, it's, an extension of time has been moved by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Shree. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, an extension of time of 10 minutes.
Thanks, Chair. So every time a councillor expends discretionary funding, like LMCF funding, that is publicly available. The organisation that goes to and the amount that is, that is allocated is publicly available. When it comes to festival funding, it goes part of the way. It talks about which festivals have been funded, but we have had in the past to, had to ask for the information about the level of that funding, but that has also been given. But what we know is that when it comes to sponsorships, that information is not publicly available. So we don't know to which groups are sponsored and for how much. Therefore, we don't actually know if a decision to sponsor a particular organisation is politically motivated or not. And I, I assume, I assume no decisions and I hope no decisions for, under the previous policy or going forward would have political interference, but we just don't know. And the rate payers of Brisbane don't know who is making these decisions. It talks about a delegate of council, but it doesn't talk about who that delegate is. I assume that's the CEO and then someone else who, who decides that. But we don't want a situation where a Lord Mayor or a Chair of a committee, not talking about any particular one here today, can exert political influence and suggest or pressure a council bureaucrat into making a decision to sponsor a particular, a particular group. So all that should be above reproach, that should be publicly available. So we have total oversight over that. So we want to make sure that this sponsorship policy is airtight. We have had in the last couple of years, a suggestion that a councillor had some undue influence over a funding proposal, a funding allocation in their ward. And that councillor was referred to the CCC over that. And that issue is now ongoing in a civil suit. So we want to make sure, we want to make sure that this policy, this policy, a former councillor now, this policy is above reproach. And clause E, the Proposed Advertising Devices Local Law. This is now to go out to concurrently state interest check and public consultation. We'll support this item today, going out to public consultation and reserve our, our judgment on the final advertisement, advertising devices local law when we see the results of that consultation process and the consultation, the feedback that council receives. Although we want to make sure again that, that this consultation is genuine and it's not like what we have seen recently from LMP councillors, whether it is about the redevelopment of their local park down at New Farm, where they were labelled scaremongers, or on a local DA where, where the Chair said those people should be careful what they wish for when they, when they express their views about that. And we, so we don't want to scare people off from having a meaningful say in a change to our local law. So we will, we will watch that process and make our final judgment when this comes back to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers, anyone? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, sorry. Thought that perhaps somebody else in the LMP might speak. I just want to speak briefly on item B and item C and D, if I have time. But it's item B particularly. Firstly, I don't support item B with respect to the fact that we're doing a sweetheart deal with the CBIC. Obviously, these blocks of lands, we, we really don't know how much money council might get from them on the open market. And we are prepared to do a deal with the CBIC off-market to give them this property. Now, that's not necessarily in the best interests of the rate payers of Brisbane. Secondly, the Lord Mayor says in his speech and it says in the papers before us today that the intention is the land will be developed for assisted living purposes. Well, the Lord Mayor has no say in what happens to this land once it is transferred to the CBIC. The CBIC has clearly sold off council assets, like the Yorongpili Business Centre. And clearly, you know, the Lord Mayor says that the intention is to do something, but that's not necessarily what happens. He has no lawful way of actually saying that the CBIC will use this land for that purpose. Thirdly, he also conflates the idea of what happens to the profit. Now, as far as I know, the Green Fund has $20 million in it. All of that money has been spent and then some, based on the questions I've asked. None of it's been spent in my area. There's no say by any councillors about where that money goes. It's just allocated by the Lord Mayor. It is not a return that is reflective of the profit the CBIC makes. It's a set amount, it's the same set amount. I don't think it's changed all that much over the years. So I don't know that we are necessarily getting a value-for-money return from the CBIC. The other problem, of course, with the CBIC is the only reason the CBIC actually works is one, these are all council assets. Generally, council then pays commercial rent to the CBIC and then only a small portion of that funding is actually returned to council through a set dividend that is only spent in LMP areas and maybe the odd Labour area. So, you know, there is a real problem with the merry-go-round of financial... Better choose my words right here. Financial, I don't know, I can't say what I'm going to say. But there is a problem with the way in which this funding is being washed through the council process. We are not seeing a return on that that reflects the rate of investment. So if you were going to look at investing in a particular asset, you would look at what the rate of return would be, what the value is against that asset. We don't do that. We just go, yeah, we'll just give that to the CBIC. Yeah, we reckon whatever they want to offer us is going to be okay. Yeah, they can do whatever they want with it. They say they might do this with it, but, you know, we don't really know that's what they're going to do. And yeah, we might get $20 million back. But that's got no relationship to what the CBIC actually are paying, investing and delivering for the rate payers of our city. So this is funny money. This is funny money, the CBIC, and it's all council and rate payers funny money. So really, if the CBIC was interested in this, they should go to the market. And we might see whether there are other interested parties out there that are prepared to pay for this land. And perhaps we get a better value-for-money return on it. I just want to make some brief comments on item C. Mainly, you just can't trust this council on IT. And briefly on item D, the sponsorship policy of council. This is one of those areas of council that's been largely unavailable to non-LMP councillors. It is extremely difficult to find information about council sponsorship policy and how to apply. There's no form you can download. It, it was actually a weird little document that I found a couple of years ago that has just sort of a list of questions that you're supposed to answer and send a submission in. All other grants programmes are done through Smarti Grants. They're transparent, they're announced. The sponsorship policy of this council is extremely opaque. And in my view, it is being used in a very party political way. It is extremely hard for groups to find the information to apply for sponsorship from council. And I think council needs to do more to bring sponsorship applications into line with the other more transparent grant programmes that council runs to make sure that it is easily able to be identified on the council website. It's accessible to all parties who may be interested, that there is an online mechanism for it. And none of that actually happens at the moment. And I, I think that's a real flaw in the sponsorship policy. And that's it.
Further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to speak on item B and I think item E is the Advertising Local Law. Just briefly with item B, for the interest of councillors who weren't around when the Litton Road widening was first debated. Two of these home, these lots that are being sold off were forcibly resumed from residents who lived along Litton Road. So they were displaced for the road widening project. They were forced out of their homes because council said it needed the land for the road widening project. Turns out now we don't need the land and, and we're selling it back. And I think, I, I think that highlights a significant problem in the way council planned the widening of Litton Road. And I think arguably represents a, a bit of an exploitation of the, of those resumption powers. Because council and state government, we're only supposed to resume land where we actually need it for the infrastructure project. We're not supposed to resume land because it's near the infrastructure project and we think we might want it because it'll be convenient to park trucks for a few years, which is essentially what happened with these particular blocks of land. The, the figures, the, the dollar value is commercial in confidence. And it's a shame I'm not able to speak publicly about that. But it does seem like the, the value that we paid to those residential homeowners when we took their homes is significantly less than what we are now selling these sites for. So it's, yeah, it's certainly not surprising, but I think it's, it's a bit unfair on those owners. We force them to sell their homes to us because we say we need it for a road widening that we don't actually need it for. We force them to sell their homes to us at one price. And then a couple of years later, we, we sell that land, we unsell that land for a significantly higher price. In, in some respects, it's a, maybe, like, essentially councillors acting here as a property speculator and using its compulsory acquisition powers in a way that seems a little bit disingenuous to me. And I, I think the, the owners who were forced out of their home here would, would be right to feel hard done by. When you, you can, if any councillors actually care about this, I don't know if any of the administration councillors really do. But if you, if you're interested in this, take a look at the aerial map of One Scanlon Street, East Brisbane. You can open it up on your satellite view. You'll see where the homes used to sit and where this empty block of land now sits. And you'll see that for at least one of the homes, it, it, it wasn't needed for that road widening. The entire block of land on which that home stood is outside the footprint of this road widening and could perhaps have been retained. And so you have to wonder whether those owners really did freely consent or did understand that when they were forced to sell. And I, I wonder if the broader public would feel comfortable with the fact that council is potentially misusing its acquisition powers in this way. Sounds like a nice thing that the land will be repurposed for assisted living. But again, there are many kinds of assisted living. And I, I'd be keen to understand, is it actually a non-profit entity that's undertaking this development? Or is it just a developer who's leveraging opportunities off the NDIS to make a, make a profit? And, and those are two very different propositions. I'd be quite supportive of council making land available for low, low-cost accommodation for people with a disability. But that's very different to council making land available so some developer of retirement living can make a quick buck. And I think that, that deserves closer scrutiny. Just with the Advertising Local Law, I... Just with the advertising local law, I want to thank and congratulate the council for finally bringing through this change. Who's portfolio is this? Is this under councillor Marks? Yeah. I guess I want to offer a respectful challenge to the administration, which is to actually do some genuine widespread consultation on this. There are a lot of people in our city who care about the proliferation of commercial advertising, who have strong thoughts on this. But the way that these local law amendments and consultations usually go down is that most people don't know they're happening, most people don't understand the details of it. It's one thing to put up a survey and the draft legislation and a consultation page on the website. What would be much better is actually if council produced some visualisations and put that up on social media, for example, and said to residents, hey, do you think an ad that looks like this is appropriate in this neighbourhood? Have your say on the proposed local law changes. That's the challenge I'm offering to the administration, is to actually consult, to actually promote this process, to actually give residents a meaningful say in the advertising local law. I know councillor Maddox's residents are very attuned and alert to this issue, but across the city, I'm hearing concerns about, from residents, particularly about the very large, very bright LED billboards. But also just more generally, the sheer volume of gaudy, tacky advertising that I think undermines the visual amenity of our communities. It would be good if... I think there are thousands of residents who would have something meaningful to say about this advertising local law. I think there are literally thousands of residents across the city who have strong opinions about advertising and who would like to have a meaningful say. In practice, I don't think thousands of residents are going to make a submission on this local law process because they won't have a good pathway to do so and they won't be supported and encouraged to do so. And so that's my challenge to the administration, to councillor Marks, to the deputy dipmayor, to the mayor, if he's just walked back in the chamber. Actually do a proper, well-promoted, accessible public consultation on this advertisement local law. You put a lot of money into consulting or at least advertising on certain projects when you really want to let the public know about something you're doing. You put a lot of money into promoting that. You produce materials through multiple formats, social media, glossy brochures, et cetera. Why not actually advertise this amendment to the advertising local law and let people know it's happening so that they can have some informed contributions? I think that would be very much welcomed by a lot of residents. And of course, then the challenge to this administration is to actually take that feedback on board because we know the marketing companies, we know the big advertising corporations will be heavily lobbying council. I'm sure they'll be asking for meetings with key decision-makers. I'm sure they'll be trying to exert whatever influence they can and scaremongering the council about being bad for business if its restrictions on advertising are too tight. But in fact, you shouldn't just listen to the big advertising corporations, you should be listening to ordinary residents who take a very different view on some of this stuff. So don't sell out to the big end of town. Don't give the big advertising corporations whatever they want. Actually go the whole hog and introduce some proper regulations and tighter restrictions so that our city isn't burdened by proliferation of unsightly and unnecessary commercial advertising.
Further speakers? councillor Allen.
Point of order, sorry.
Sorry councillor, point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, I apologise councillor Adam. Could I please just ask that item B is taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes, please? I'm sorry, just voting purposes, thanks.
Noted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on items A, B, C and D, and I'll kick off with item A, the SCP, for construction of the Nudgy Recreation Reserve District Sports Park. And just to add a little bit of a local context to the Lord Mayor's comments earlier. So this is a terrific project for the local community and indeed the wider community. The site in question is an old landfill site that was previously used for sport and recreation, but due to subsidence, competitive sport was discontinued. While it has remained a popular location for local residents, many who walk their dogs there, it's certainly a site that is under-optimised and has better and more extensive uses. During consultation on the project, the community was asked to provide ideas on what they would like to see this site used for. There were a vast array of ideas, some quite reasonable and some a little bit outlandish. But nonetheless, there was a terrific amount of input to the final concept design, and this was shared with the community. There was strong support for the concept design and accordingly councillor moving ahead to procure the services of a contractor to complete the project. This project will provide a first-class sport and recreation facility for the growing local community. Over recent years, new housing has been built within easy walking distance to this site. New families have moved into the area and will have the opportunity to enjoy these new facilities. Sporting clubs in Northgate Ward and across the north side have been reaching membership caps and struggling to support their sporting programmes on the facilities available. There is a clear need for additional sport and recreation facilities, and this project will help to fill that gap. The project will deliver irrigated and lit multi-use sports fields, including six touch football fields, two soccer fields and two cricket ovals with synthetic wickets. There'll be combined public toilets and clubhouse facilities with four change rooms, umpires' rooms, an office, canteen and storage area, including rainwater reuse and solar roof panel systems. There'll be additionally a playground, a shelter, picnic settings and a barbecue. Additionally, there'll be a BMX track, a perimeter pathway with fitness equipment and car parking facilities. The new facility is also well-located near the Nudgy train station, which will provide additional transport options. Now, to some of the points that councillor Cassidy raised, it is an old landfill site and it would be irresponsible of council not to allocate a substantial contingency on this site. That's the responsible thing to do, and that's what we've done. And councillor Cassidy indicated that, you know, it's been 17 years and we hadn't done anything with this site previously. But I would remind councillor Cassidy that councillor Flesser was the sitting councillor in this ward for 19 years. So I think it's a bit rich to suggest that we hadn't done anything. Moving on to item B, the surplus property disposal item. I will provide a little bit more information to what the Lord Mayor provided earlier, but basically this relates to the sale of surplus land at 14 Rogers Parade West, Everden Park, and lots one and two at Scanlon Street in East Brisbane. The Rogers Parade site was acquired in 1968 as a future water reserve site. It's no longer required for water reserve purposes and is considered to be surplus to council's requirements. Council has undertaken a DA for reconfiguring the lot, and the land will be subdivided from one lot into three lots for dwelling houses. This was approved, however subdivision has not occurred. CBIC lodged an interest to acquire the land and will further lodge a change application from one lot into three lots to one lots into two lots. CBIC have expressed a desire for the site to be developed for assisted living purposes as part of the NDIS programme. Now, lots one and two, Scanlon Street, East Brisbane, as councillor Shree's indicated, these were acquired as part of the Winham Road upgrade project. These properties are no longer required, and accordingly CBIC will acquire these sites once again to provide assisted living and supported by the NDIS programme. Now, in the context of some of the questions councillor Cassidy raised, there will be an income paid to CBIC when they complete these buildings and they are rented out. This will obviously support council's dividends. The sites themselves have been valued to ensure that the transfer to CBIC occurs at a market price. And I guess it was really disappointing to hear people on the other side of the chamber criticise this project because I think to get this assisted living outcome is a great thing for the community. And, you know, at this point in time, there is a demand for more assisted living facilities, so ultimately a great community outcome. Turning to item C, the amendment to the significant contracting plan for Microsoft Digital Business Platform. The Lord Mayor touched upon some of the specifics in terms of the timing and the section of the contract that changed. But importantly, the reason for doing this is to encourage a wider range of people responding to the tender. There's an ability for them to respond with part offers or alternatively to come to us with joint offers. And the net effect of this is that we will get a better outcome. Council will get a better outcome, and that will be a positive for the ratepayers of the city. Moving on to the sponsorship policy, once again, this is a policy that did need to come to the chamber. We needed to do a little bit of a tidy up on this. It has been some time since it last came to the chamber in August 2003. So there's a little bit of housekeeping in all of this. We've certainly streamlined some of the internal approval processes, and ultimately this will provide for a smoother, more efficient process for those organisations seeking a sponsorship. So ultimately, a good thing for the community, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair, so Acting Chair, Deputy Chair. Look, I just want to rise very briefly to speak on item E, the advertising local law. Through you, Deputy Chair, can I assure councillor Shree, and I think councillor Cassidy also mentioned it, absolutely, we want as much community consultation as possible. Consultation starts tomorrow. In fact, the documents will be uploaded at 12:01am, so one minute past midnight, if you're very keen. Oh, we could still be here. There you go. Okay, I didn't think of that. So if you're very keen, you can absolutely go on the website. Can I suggest potentially downloading and printing those pages out? I would suggest that maybe councillors have a copy in their offices and encourage their residents to drop in and have a look at those. There is a number of pages, but there are some very clear guidelines with lots of pictures. And I have to say, I for one appreciate pictures because it gives you exactly what we're talking about here. It is a very complex and involved advertising local law. It's why it's taken so long to get here, and I apologise to the chamber for the length of time it's taken to get here, but we're here now. It's open for 15 business days, taking in mind that we do have Easter in the middle, so those days are taken out of it.
Councillors?
So they're taken out of it, and then it goes to the state interest checks as well. So that's why we, obviously, we take the Easter public holidays out of that.
Councillor Cumming.
So I would suggest again, like I say, we're encouraging everyone to have their say on these local laws, and I look forward to all the consultation coming back.
Point of order councillor Shree.
Will councillor Marks take a quick question?
Sure.
If you were consulting...
Councillor Shree, through the chair, please.
If councillor Marks, if you were consulting with your community on, like, a local dog-off-leash area or some traffic coming, would you think that three weeks is enough time for consultation?
Three weeks, no. It's usually a couple of weeks is fine. I mean, we're following what the local law is telling us we have to give, and that's what we're doing.
But you could do more.
Yeah. As far as the law goes, no, I'm not aware that we can do any longer than that. It's a timeframe issue. And the other issue we have is the TLPI that's in place at the moment. It runs out, so obviously this local law will take over both those ones as well as the subordinate law, so that's the issue. So again, I could just please emphasise, get onto your local residents. I know through you, Mr Chair, councillor Shree has a number of Facebook followers. I would really appreciate him putting it up on his Facebook page and, like I say, encouraging all councillors to get the word out there, and we look forward to all the consultation coming back and bringing it back to the chamber for debate. Thank you.
Some good advice there. Any further speakers? No, Lord Mayor? No, we will now put items A, C, D and E. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? I believe the ayes have it. We will now put item B. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division?
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Shree. Please ring the bells. Okay, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those against? Clarks, please read the result when you are ready.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it. The vote had been 21 in favour and two against.
The ayes have it. We'll now move on to the next item in the agenda. Deputy Mayor, City Planning and Economic Development Committee, please.
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted.
Second that.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. First of all, as I do weekly, the Brisbane Hub update. Last week, 64 drop-in visitors compared to 47 the week before, which is a fantastic 36% increase. We had three great mentoring sessions last week. On the couch with James Tuma, had 66 people in attendance. Again, up 20% from Phil DeBella, who we thought was doing well with 55. So the competition is on the couch in the business hub. There was a great feedback on James and the quality of the conversation. I said deputy mayor, sorry, didn't even realise. It's been a long day. Sorry, Deputy Chair.
That's okay, I thank you for the promotion.
And then the fintech... You can have it sometimes. The fintech Queensland held a conference onsite on the 17th of March, which had 100 in attendance as well. This week, we see the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Alumni Networking Event. We held that last night. It was fantastic to share the successes and connect with alumni in this fantastic programme that is run by the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Business Roundtable. On the 25th, at 5 o'clock, there's the Brisbane Festival, Boldly Brisbane's Success Story of 2020, the only festival in Australia that went ahead. So they're going to be talking about their success story on employing 800 local artists in 2020. On the 26th, at 3 o'clock, the City Centre Interim Action Plan will be having a targeted invite-only group for feedback on the city plan with industry stakeholders within the CBD area. And on the 29th, at 5.30, the French Association is having their AGM, which is a great idea too for chambers of conferences and associations that want to meet in the city heart for their associations. The Brisbane Hub is available for those opportunities. The presentation last week was on the economic recovery initiatives within the building and construction industry and how we have supported them over the last 12 months. The presentation went for nearly the whole 30 minutes because Peter Harwood, Development Services Manager, had so much to talk about, the fantastic opportunities that we have given this industry that is so very important to employment on the ground when it comes to Brisbane. Things included were change application prioritisation services, open door prelodgements, house and homes assessment team, automatic extensions to existing approvals, and of course, the building and construction hotline, 133 PLAN. Through the house and home teams, councils received over 1,500 domestic scale applications since July last year. 601 were new houses, and of course, the COVID renno, 909 of those were for house extensions. This helped to spur on applications, and council introduced free pre-lodgement meetings, also known as open-door meetings. 250 of these have been held to date, with 223 of them occurring within their 15 business day turnaround for minutes as well. The officers have been doing absolutely sensational work and handling the workload that's come their way, and their customer services has attracted significant praise about them to my office, I have to say. I hear it on the ground, at meetings, at luncheons, in boardrooms. They are really impressed with what the team is doing, and what we'll see is the flow-on effects of this for our economic recovery. And I would like to thank them on the behalf of the whole of the chamber for their efforts. It's clear that these policies set out to make a clear difference in the industry, and they have helped to achieve that. Incentives close next Wednesday, obviously, on the 31st of March, so some people can still take opportunities for that, but the team is still ready to continue the hard work. It is not going to slow down, and we will be there to support them in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? There being none, councillor Adams. No, we'll now put the report. All those in favour... No, we'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Public and Active Transport, please.
Thanks Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the sixteenth of March twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday the sixteenth of March twenty twenty-one be adopted. Councillor Murphy, is there any debate?
Yes, thanks Deputy Chair. Just before I get to the committee report, there was some commentary earlier in the meeting today that was not specifically about the Olympics or any of the confidential information that we discussed. And comments were made, I believe, potentially by councillor Cassidy around Brisbane Metro and Infrastructure Australia and a perceived lack or failure on this council's behalf going to the federal government, being able to get money from them for major projects. And I believe, I believe the commentary was around that, you know, we had been unsuccessful in that regard and I would just like to direct councillor Cassidy to the Infrastructure Australia website where they will see the only high priority public transport project in Queensland is Brisbane Metro. And it's in fact the only publicly funded Infrastructure Australia project in the state. The state government's own Cross River Rail, perhaps because it scored such a low benefit cost ratio, score of one point two seven compared to Brisbane Metro's two point three seven. It was perhaps for that reason that the state was unsuccessful in getting their project funded by Infrastructure Australia. But I can tell you, Brisbane City Council is always happy to lend a hand to the state. We are of course, as you know, a major provider of infrastructure projects in Brisbane. We've spent seven billion dollars, invested seven billion dollars, I should say, in Brisbane in the last decade building infrastructure projects. So if they ever want a leg up, then we are happy to help them. Chair, Deputy Chair, last week, the committee received an update on council's e-mobility strategy. I think I can agree, I think I can speak for all councillors who were in the presentation. It was an incredible presentation from Marie Gales and Sue Phillips, two of council's thought leaders on e-mobility. Now, we know Brisbane is a leader in active transport innovation. We were the ones that commenced city cycle way back in twenty-ten, which was the second shared bike scheme in the nation at the time, a very innovative, forward-looking scheme. And then, of course, in twenty-eighteen, we were the first major city to enact an e-scooter scheme, commencing with the trial of Lime scooters. An operating agreement was then struck with Lime in twenty-nineteen, which now regulates a competitive market between two providers. And last year, we became the first city in Australia to develop an e-mobility strategy. We've seen that Deputy Chair, over the past decade, right across the globe. Technology has very significantly changed the way that people travel in our city. E-mobility demand in Brisbane has now returned to pre-Covid nineteen levels with more than five thousand e-scooter journeys happening every single day. And that's just on the publicly owned e-scooters that we know about, the Lime and Neuron e-scooters, let alone private e-scooter trips out there. With the importance of micro mobility well and truly here, council is now working on a number of initiatives to provide the very best transport experience for residents and visitors to our city. That includes finalising this e-mobility strategy to provide guidance and to the private sector and the public sector to support the use of sustainable and more energy-efficient transport options around Brisbane. E-mobility is a key initiative of the Transport Plan for Brisbane and it focuses on opportunities to encourage a greater use of e-bikes, e-scooters and other emerging sustainable e-mobility travel options. Now, Brisbane's e-mobility strategy will provide further direction to realise this key initiative of the Transport Plan, helping to meet the city's needs as well as being flexible to respond to the opportunities and the challenges that e-mobility presents. And I, I don't wash my hands of the challenges that e-mobility presents at all, Deputy Chair. It is a very fast-moving space and I think you would struggle to find, yeah, no pun intended, councillor McLaughlin. It is a very fast-moving space and I think you would struggle to find any city in the world that has yet found a a best practice model for regulation of e-scooters and e-mobility devices. But I can tell you that other cities are talking about what Brisbane is doing, they are looking at what we are doing and they are copying what we are doing. So you know you are doing something right when you are taking a leadership position in that role. Now, we've had more than nine hundred responses, Deputy Chair, to the draft e-mobility strategy, actually more than we received for the entire Transport Plan for Brisbane. So I can count that as a personal victory over councillor McLaughlin. But it was open for public consultation, shared just for just a few months between the twenty-fourth of November till the twenty-eighth of February twenty twenty-one, so nine hundred submissions. And we received a number of submissions from key agencies and interest groups, including the Queensland University of Technology, the Trauma Institute had made a very high-quality submission, Bicycle Queensland, the Queensland Government's Department of Transport and Main Roads, TMR, so the policy setters in this place, made a submission to our policy. Blind Citizens Australia, Vision Australia, the Queensland University's Business School made a submission. RACQ, who who stated that the intent of the strategies to support e-mobility options was supported. So we really appreciate that support from the RACQ. Queensland Walks, who welcomed the initiative shown by council to go out there with a strategy and Brisbane's West and CBD bicycle user groups who commended the strategy, which they considered to be pioneering on an international basis. So that's from the bug groups. The draft strategy supports a number of relevant initiatives, Deputy Chair. Council is conducting and continuing to monitor, of course, the twelve-month city-length cycleway trial, a network of separated bike lanes in the CBD that provides a missing link for cyclists and e-mobility users. And we know that this is actually the first on-road dedicated cycle path in the city that e-mobility users can use lawfully. We know, Chair, Deputy Chair, that they are using the road unlawfully at the moment in many locations around the city. But we're hopeful that if this trial of dedicated protected infrastructure is successful, that we will be able to convince the Queensland Government to change their mind on that and to roll out further e-mobility options in on-road bike lanes around the city. In all cases, consideration of safety is absolutely paramount in our thinking. Our vision is for a connected city with modern transport options that enhance livability and harness the very latest in global innovation and that's why we're opening it up for even more travel options through this strategy. And I very much hope to bring the final strategy here to the chamber sometime in May. The committee also considered two petitions at our last meeting. The first was requesting council undertake community consultation and a feasibility study for a potential green bridge located east of the Story Bridge. Council's Green Bridges Programme, as you know, Deputy Chair, aims to develop a linked network of strategically located walking and cycling bridges to enable many residents and workers to replace as many car-based trips as possible. Council is investigating potential locations for a fifth green bridge, which include locations east of the Story Bridge and will make more information available as planning progresses. Interestingly, council is aware that the Queensland Government allocated a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars through the Queensland Transport and Road Investment Programme, so QTRIP, in twenty fifteen sixteen financial year, completed in the twenty eighteen nineteen financial year to undertake options analysis for a bridge east of the Story Bridge. So the work has been done on this, on this option. The investigation was expected to be completed sometime in twenty sixteen. Council has yet to be provided a final report on this bridge. I wrote to the Transport Minister in September last year requesting final copy of this report. I've yet to receive a response, Deputy Chair, so I will, I will follow that up very soon. But I know sometimes I get very quick responses from the Transport Minister, other times I get, I get fairly slow responses. So it just depends on the topic sometimes, Deputy Chair. The committee considered a second petition, which was requesting council reverse the decision to discontinue the Norman Park and New Farm Cross River ferry service. Now, as I've said previously in this place, Deputy Chair, the cessation of the Norman Park Cross River ferry service was not a decision that this council took lightly. Council very much appreciates the concern from the community about the loss of this service and I'd like to apologise for any inconvenience caused. I know I've spoken to many, very many members of the Norman Park community about this issue now. However, for reasons that I've shared in this place previously and provided again in the response, this decision will not change. Thank you and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Deputy Chair, I speak on, I will speak on item B and C and be asked, and ask that they be taken seriatum together for voting, apart from A, please.
Sorry, that was A, sorry, B and C together?
Yeah, so just A separately and B and C together. Thank you. Clause B, which is the petition requesting council undertake community consultation and a feasibility study for a potential green bridge located east of the Story Bridge. This petition came about as a result of LMP councillors cancelling green bridges. We had councillor Adaman out in his neck of the woods there tearing his one down. We've since had councillor Mackay undermining the bridge in his area. So at the time, councillor Cook took the initiative to request council investigate a location for the now vacant fifth green bridge east of the Story Bridge, somewhere east of the Story Bridge, given there were none proposed in the original plans. And plans is a very loose term when it comes to the green bridge programme. Councillor Murphy, let's slip a couple of weeks ago in a committee meeting that the extent of the planning for the five green bridges, as announced at the last election, was entirely, entirely made by the Lord Mayor and no council planning had gone into that election commitment. And he made very clear that in that committee meeting, when, when we were discussing that, that that was the case. So it, it started out as a big game of pin the tail on the donkey. And now we've seen that the NC committee had a presentation about the green bridge programme on the twenty-second of February. So I called the file on that, hoping some answers for the planning process would be in there. And this is what I learnt, there were no supporting documents and there is no file. That confirmed our suspicions that there actually is no broad plan for these, for these green bridges, apart from the Kangaroo Point one and the bikeway extension over the Breakfast Creek. So the response says here in, in the petition response before us, they're investigating another location and that's probably likely code for no fifth green bridge at all, I think, Deputy Chair. And giving, given the funding for the bridges is anemic at best and the Lord Mayor has to get funding from other levels of government to progress any more than the two we've already got now, means that these bridges will be at least delayed, if not cancelled altogether. So we don't support the recommendation that's in this petition before us today because it's clear the work hasn't been done. And in particular, the request in the petition was for consultation with the communities about options for a green bridge. It didn't specify a location, it didn't ask for a specific location. The continued reference to the state government study is a distraction because the community, quite clearly, as thousand signatures on this petition, wanted to be part of the council process. Council's talking a big game at the moment, the Lord Mayor's talking a big game about this green bridges programme. They hear all the time that he's consulting on the green bridges at Tuwong and St Lucia and into West End. So I wanted to be part of a process for identifying a river crossing east of the Story Bridge, but they have been denied that. I think looking at the state government study is important and support, support councillor Murphy's calls for that to inform the process. But from what I understand, from what I understand after questions I've asked, that study was provided at council officer level years ago and council actually has that study. So perhaps you need to go through, through you, Deputy Chair, to councillor Murphy, go through the, through the bureaucracy and find that because that was, council was extensively involved in that study at officer level and the, the final report was given to council. So the bottom line is that, that the, the community wanted to be heard about the green bridge project and they have not been and will not be through this response before us today. The second petition there, clause C, is a petition requesting council reverse the decision to discontinue the Norman Park ferry. And this is the latest plea from the Norman Park community, calling for the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy to do the right thing and reverse the callous cuts to their public transport services. We know the sad tale of this already. In the dead of the night, the Lord Mayor, after years of neglect of our wooden mono-hull ferries, pulled those boats from the, from the river. This led to cuts to services like at Norman Park. Now, despite many different options that are on the table, including utilizing the steel hull ferry for this service because city cats can be used for other services, the LMP have flat-out refused to compromise and have shown their true colours at every turn when it comes to this issue. When the easiest thing to do is to cut public transport services, that's the go-to for this Lord Mayor. And, you know, just imagine if, if this Lord Mayor cared more about maintaining a fleet of publicly owned ferries rather than his own image, we wouldn't be in this predicament to start with, Deputy Chair. So we know how this story ends, if the LMP gets away with their sneaky plans. They delay the business case for the refurbishment of those ferries. They then say the upgrades to the terminals will cost too much. They then say eventually the upgrade of the publicly owned boats costs too much. Then they privatise the fleet in perpetuity and that was their plan all along, Deputy Chair. But my message to the Lord Mayor Deputy Chair is that these people won't forget what he has done and the people of Brisbane will be regularly reminded about how the LMP are the ones responsible for ripping ferries out of the water, privatising the fleet and slashing services.
Further speakers? Being no further speakers, councillor Murphy.
Thank you Deputy Chair, just to respond to some of the, the spurious debate that councillor Cassidy often brings when it comes to issues in the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting. So let's start with green bridges. He said that councillors, LMP councillors have been out there tearing bridges down, I believe, was the, was the phrase that he had used. You know, tearing bridges down. So what actually happened was we went out to the community and we had a conversation with them about the Bell Bowery Green Bridge. We had actually many conversations with them and they told councillor Adaman, they told us very clearly, over seventy percent didn't want those bridges to happen. So yeah, and, and some surveys councillor Adaman said over eighty percent didn't want that bridge to happen. So, so when he says councillors were out there tearing down bridges, what he's really saying is the community was wrong. The community got it wrong. What you needed to do, council, was just ram through and build that bridge. Doesn't matter what the community thinks, it was the right thing to do. And we know that that's his approach because when it comes to the West End bridges, West End to St Lucia, the West End to Tuwong, St Lucia, he has stuck with a very dogmatic position. That is that council should be building bus bridges into West End, into St Lucia, into Tuwong, despite the fact that the community there overwhelmingly rejected that idea and said they didn't want bridges carrying buses into that community. So when councillor Cassidy talks a really big game on community consultation, those two things should show you that it is actually a Clayton's promise from him when it comes to community consultation. Because on those two examples, in the green bridges programme alone, he has said, we don't care what the community thinks, we would have just built them anyway. And look, then he also said that this, that somehow I've said that this was an election commitment and no planning happened because, you know, this is actually a really good trick that councillor Cassidy uses again and again and again. He says, oh, well, we know that you've said this, maybe in his mind, I said that, or maybe in some sort of interpretation of his, that's what I, that's what I said. What I said was that the Lord Mayor took five green bridges to the election. It was his election commitment and he was the person who, I believe, won that election. And so, you know, but, but there's this idea that those five bridges were pulled out of thin air. Excuse me, we were talking about the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge in the eighteen-seventies. It has been on the agenda of multiple council administrations, multiple state governments for over a century. We even had, you know, councillor Strunk trying to tell us that Labour administration was so good because they built a story bridge in the nineteen thirties during the Great Depression. And, you know, I could give a history lesson that goes back even further than councillor Strunk talking about the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. So, you know, the idea that this was some sort of thought bubble, you know, these bridges just came out of nowhere, you know, the, the Lord Mayor was thinking, oh, how am I going to win this election, I'm going to come up with these green bridges? Deputy Chair, we know these green bridges are supported by the community with the exception of one and they are supported in the form that this administration is proposing them in, which is as pedestrian bridges, green bridges. Now, he also mentioned that council officers have received this document from the state. And it is true that back then, council officers were assessing draft materials that the state was providing to them. There were conversations happening back and forth. But he has alluded to the fact that council officers may already have this full and complete document. That is not true, that is not true. Council officers have never seen the final document here. I know that councillor Cassidy has a very solid backdoor into the state government, so obviously has done his own research into this. He has a hotline to various ministerial offices. He has a hotline to various ministerial offices. So yeah, he often, so through you Deputy Chair to councillor Cassidy, why don't you use that to help our Brisbane City Council rather than hinder it for once? You know, use that back door, go and get the final version of this document, you can table it in here when we come back for the next session. I would be more than happy to work with you councillor Cassidy to get that final document, help progress green bridges east of the Story Bridge. And then of course, you know, Chair, the flavour of the month, privatisation of the fleet, we went over this last week, it was Jim Sawley that privatised the ferry fleet. It was Jim Sawley who said the private sector has a role to play in ferry provision and this administration has changed nothing about that. He said the plan here is to sell off and privatised the ferry terminals, you know, make the case that there'll be no investment in these ferry terminals that'll allow us to privatis it. Well councillor Cassidy, it was this administration which upgraded Brettsworf, Bealimba, Guyat Park, Hawthorn, Holman, Street Maritime, Milton, New Farm Park, North Quay, North Shore, Q T, Regatta, Sydney Street, Tenerife, UQ, St Lucia, West End and South Bank Three. This administration has invested hundreds, hundreds of millions of dollars in new and upgraded ferry terminals all around the river. This administration has no interest in stopping river and ferry transport in our city, we love our ferries. And you know what Deputy Chair, there's more upgrades to come. But we've been really clear that those upgrades have to be supported by patronage, it wasn't the case with Norman Park and we've made our decision-making process on that extremely clear for everyone to see.
Thank you. I'll now put item A of the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Now put items B and C, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ring the bells please. All those in favour for items B and C, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Clarks, please read the result when you are ready.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eight in favour and five against.
Councillors, the ayes have it.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order.
Deputy Chair, I move that council now adjourn for tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
So the motion's been put to have a recess for afternoon tea by councillor Landis, seconded by, sorry, I'm doing your thing now, I'm doing your thing now. Supper, thank you. All those in favour of what councillor Landis said? Those against? The ayes have it. Councillors, as we have quorum, we'll continue with the meeting. Councillor McGlocklin, Infrastructure Committee please.
Point of order Deputy Chair.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure-
One moment please councillor, point of order.
I just would like to clarify, Mr Deputy Chair, as we are at nine o'clock, would you require a motion to continue the meeting?
No, it's seven hours from the commencement of the meeting. Thank you councillor Owen. Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor McGlocklin, seconded by councillor Maddick, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I'll go to the committee report, which is on the Gresham Street Bridge replacement. We talked about this briefly last week, so won't talk to it at length. But I know you, Mr Deputy Chair, are very interested in this particular project.
Great project.
And this is, we're sad to see the old timber bridges go, but we also have to look at what the necessary infrastructure is for our city. This bridge is now some 90 years old, timber-built and has significant limitations, including as I mentioned last week, the weight limit of 22.5 tonnes restricting buses and maintenance vehicles from using the bridge. So, and that is a considerable constraint. The replacement bridge will increase the capacity to take large vehicles, which means better servicing for the community of St John's Wood and the 300 properties or so that are on the other side of that precinct and will provide better flood resilience and significantly improve the pedestrian and cyclist links to Waterworks Road. So this is a great project, a part of our commitment to building a better Brisbane, increasing, improving our infrastructure, building new structures where we need to, to make sure that we maintain the amenity of our city. Mr Deputy Chair, there are a couple of petitions there, one requesting council work with the Annelie community to fix Ipswich Road and the other a petition requesting council install a traffic island on a bend in Norman Street, Willowin. I'll leave any debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor. Is there any further debate? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you. And would request first off that item B be taken, Seri Adam, just for voting?
Item B for voting?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay. Look, this is a petition about the works, lists a number of jobs or proposed improvements for the residents of Annelie to fix the Ipswich Road corridor that particularly runs through this section of Annelie. We took a petition, councillor Johnston and myself took a petition to residents. We now share Annelie as a suburb and councillor Johnston looks after the western side and I look after the eastern side. So it's very good that we could work together on this and there were over 700 residents signed that petition. And really, it was asking council to do a number of things to improve the corridor and unfortunately, most of them have been rejected or just ignored. And the difficulty in this is that we've seen some minor improvements, we've brought council kicking and screaming in to deliver some minor improvements along Ipswich Road, but they are still ignoring, the administration is still ignoring the essential work that needs to happen along this particular corridor. And I'd like to draw to the chamber's attention that really, there's a number of sites here that just require urgent attention and require significant expenditure of money so that it can be repaired or can be brought up to acceptable standard. One of those is the intersection of Cracknell and Ipswich Road, which recently, we had received some funding for approximately $300,000, but that has recently just been chopped, removed. So the improvements that were going to go there, that were potentially going to fix traffic movements to that site, have just been removed by the administration. Secondly, we have another side along Ipswich Road, the corner of Venna and Ipswich Road, which is, which carries a huge amount of traffic in terms of traffic turning at that particular point or that particular intersection, but it also carries a lot of freight movement between Annelie and Fairfield Road. So that is another very significant intersection that once again, we're seeing, well, yeah, it's important, it should be done, but it's never going to happen. Similarly, Echabon Road, we have the slip lane there, that this petition is actually agreeing that it is dangerous there for pedestrians to step out and cross where Echabon Road meets Ipswich Road. Once again, nothing is happening there. So I suppose from a residence point of view, from a councillor point of view, it's very disappointing, but from a residence point of view, it's even more disappointing. Because what we're trying to do here is provide better traffic flow, but better connectivity for residents in terms of active transport. And unfortunately, this petition ignores that. One of the things we did achieve, and this once again has taken years of fighting, was to get the traffic speed lowered. But that really only occurred when TMR became involved and TMR went out and commissioned council to do proper pedestrian council along Ipswich Road. And they actually had the facts and figures then that supported the case for reducing the speed limit from 60 to 50. And that will be implemented in the next few weeks. But it was such a hard fight for such a logical, simple thing that should have been done so long ago. And it's really, this is, this support from residents is demonstrated by what they tell me and what they tell councillor Johnston, but in the fact that they're supporting this petition. There were no surprises in the part of the petition said, do a skip for the shopping centre in Annelie. It's been now 15 years that this administration has been, had full control and at least 18 years since Campbell Newman was in power. And Annelie during that time has received no library upgrade, Ipswich Road has been ignored and we've seen no skip for the shopping centre. So the people of Annelie are feeling very neglected by this administration. And of course, yeah, there were footpaths. We got a little bit of footpath, but even most recently, you know, I drove past a footpath at the corner of Venna Road and Ipswich Road and they put new braille tiles down as part of response to this petition. But they put it down over the broken, cracked concrete that was there and didn't repair it. Now I keep hearing this, we've got one standard for the city, one standard for the city. If that footpath was in the inner city, it would be repaired like that. But because it's in an outer suburb, it's not going to be repaired. And we're told that's an acceptable standard. And I really think that's not an acceptable standard. So I don't believe we have one standard for the whole city and certainly, I constantly see that we don't have one standard for the whole city. I have say, I am disappointed with the way this petition is answered. I think it's really, it's really a slap in the face for the residents of Annelie and I will certainly keep working with councillor Johnston to represent the residents of Annelie and make sure that this administration keeps, we keep banging on their door, we keep raising the issues and we gradually get things done by an administration that seems to have no interest in this particular suburb in Brisbane.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item B, the petition of residents in Annelie calling on fixes for Ipswich Road and revitalisation of the community. I've represented Annelie since 2008 and it wasn't a suburb that I knew particularly well when I first was elected. And progressively, sections of Annelie have been carved off and gone to other wards. I feel like I've, for a long time, had been a lone voice in advocating for improvements in Annelie. And I'm very pleased that councillor Griffiths has now come on board on the eastern side of the ward so we can work together to make sure that Annelie is not, continue to be neglected by this LMP administration. I mean, the first things that I did with the residents in Annelie is listen to them about what they wanted. We've been trying for a skip, which is now a village precinct project for at least 11 years. I don't think it was the first year I was here, but I think by 2009 I was asking for a skip in the Annelie precinct. I've been asking for upgrades to the library for many, many years. And it is just unreasonable that this council continues to neglect one of the biggest suburbs in Brisbane. It is divided by this horrific arterial road that carries 65,000 vehicles a day and that's growing. It is a top five crash hotspot in all of Queensland, not just Brisbane. It is dangerous, it is not pedestrian friendly and it divides a really old and historic suburb. So there are so many things that need to be done and the 10-point plan that councillor Griffiths and I have put together outlines a series of initiatives that we want council to take action on. The one that this council's heard the most about today is certainly the speed limit issue. And council has had to be dragged kicking and screaming to reduce the speed limit by 10 kilometres an hour. This is despite two deaths at Annelie Junction at the pedestrian crossing and one just around the corner on Venna Road. And that's a third death. These were all pedestrians. We know from, as councillor Griffiths said, the state government's pedestrian counts, which they shared with us, not our own council, that there are thousands, it's between 1,000 and about 14, 45, I think was the highest intersection, of all the major intersections along Annelie Road, every single day, 1,000 people or more cross at every intersection. Now some of those intersections do not have green turning signals, they do not have zebra crossings and people have to run across side roads off Ipswich Road. It is so dangerous, it's not funny. The community they're representing spoke up strongly during Movesafe. Annelie was identified as one of the, I think there are only two suburbs outside the CBD and CBD fringe and they were graceful in Annelie from memory, both in my ward, where residents said, we want pedestrian improvements. It's something that I've actively lobbied for, for a very long time. The 10-point plan, I think, has, it's a very good blueprint for what we need to do and it does cover a whole range of issues. I'm really disappointed with council's response to the petition. This is without question, the length of the response is absolutely disproportionate to the quality of the petition response itself. There is, I think about four pages here, but council's not agreeing to do anything that's not already being done. Not a single thing. It says it might list things, it gets things wrong and I do want to put on the record the following. Towards the end of the report, it talks about, it talks about the, just want to find the right paragraph here, 37. It talks about the Low Row Bridge at Muriel Avenue and it's not feasible to increase the vertical clearance of Muriel Avenue for heavy vehicles. The petition doesn't even ask for that. I mean, I wrote to council and said, why is this included? It's not what we have asked for. I also pointed out to them that what we did ask for about the freight study and removing trucks from Venna Road is council policy. Graham Quirk and I stood on the side of the road and publicly announced the Sherwood-Yorong Pilly freight study and subsequent LMP councillors who trotted themselves out as the Lord Mayor's representative promised it to be done first election after I left, the second election after I left, and then the LMP just sort of gave up. This council does not even seem to know that such a policy exists and yet in the response here before us today, they basically say it's not feasible to increase the vertical clearance of Muriel Avenue for heavy vehicles. No one asked for it. I do not know how such factually incorrect and irrelevant information has been included in the petition response. Now I gave my comments to, I was sent the petition response on the 12th of February and I gave my comments to council on the 22nd of February, that's a month ago. So council's been sitting on this and has left it to this point in the meeting. And I just want to say that I did raise all of these issues with council, they've had over a month to make some amendments to factually, factually correct the mistakes that were pointed out to them and they chose not to do so. That probably reflects their chairman who stands up in a fit of pique and just goes, I'm cancelling anything to do with Ipswich Road if there is any kind of disagreement. Well, let me be clear, my feedback is about making things better for our community. If I say I don't agree with something in its current form and I give you positive suggestions on how to change it, I do expect that council's transport engineers will take that into account and they will make an effort to do so. It is so disappointing to see a response like this that literally does nothing and I see councillor Adams laughing with councillor McGlocklin. Yes, you were. And no doubt making criticisms of me saying that I think council can do better. I don't think it's acceptable councillor Adams, that there are-
Point of order, Mrs Chair.
Point of order Deputy May.
Through the chair and I am not in this report and I was not talking about her.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Councillor Johnson, please continue.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. See, I mean, it's not about me, but then she abuses me under her breath when she sits down.
Councillor Johnson, can you please return to the report?
Do you think that's acceptable? Because I don't.
Can you please return to the report? Can you please return to the report?
And again.
I didn't, can you please return to the report?
I can hear her here, so how is it you can't hear her?
Because I'm talking and you're talking over me, and I can't hear what's going on. Please return to the report.
Councillor Adams has now made two derogatory statements about me under her breath as she sat down. What is the problem of the deputy mayor that she can't take a little bit of constructive criticism about making Ipswich Road safer for the residents of Brisbane? That's what this is about. She thinks it's about something else. I think it's about the safety of residents who live in Annelie, pedestrians, cyclists and drivers. Every single thing that I've done is about making sure that happens. And I'm so pleased that councillor Griffiths is on board and wants to assist. Now, the LMP has failed to actually take any constructive action, and I have an amendment that I would like to move to make sure that we get, oh, the computer has just shut down. Great. I'm just going to have to pull it up, I'm so sorry. I have sent it through, but I'll need it to move it.
You're all right, take your time.
Oh, sorry, thank you. So I move the following amendment. For the Infrastructure Committee report in item B, in paragraph forty-three, recommendation that attachment A is amended in paragraph three dot point six, deletes the words listed it for future upgrade works, and replaces it with is funding a signalised crossing to improve pedestrian safety. And add a new recommendation is added as follows. Council transfers the remainder of the $331,000 for the Ipswich Road at Cracknell Road project, funded in the 2021 budget at item two point one point two point three, unilaterally cancelled by councillor McLoughlin and Brisbane City Council to fund a green walk signal at the corner of Eckeburn Road and Ipswich Road Annelie to improve pedestrian safety.
Seconded.
Thank you. The amendment has been circulated by the clerks. I'll read it again. So the amendment to Infrastructure Committee report, item B, in paragraph forty-three, recommendation that attachment A is amended in paragraph three dot point six, deletes the words listed it for future upgrade works, and replaces it with is funding funding a signalised crossing to improve pedestrian safety. And a new recommendation is added as follows. Council transfers the remainder of the $331,000 for Ipswich Road and Cracknell Road projects, funded in the 2020-21 budget at item two point one point two point three, unilaterally cancelled by councillor McLoughlin and Brisbane City Council to fund a green walk signal at the corner of Eckeburn Road and Ipswich Road Annelie to improve pedestrian safety.
To the amendment, please, councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Oh, just one moment, please. Yep, right. Just making sure you had a green mic.
Yes, yes, I do, thank you. So the amendment that I'm putting forward today picks up on one of the issues that's included in this report, and it's actually a Move Safe issue. Now, we know that this administration downgraded Move Safe, which was a significant pedestrian safety initiative of this council. Apparently now it only sits with the seniors' strategy. Old people, yes. So no one else walks in this city, just older people. But in the Move Safe process, residents in Annelie very strongly spoke up about where they wanted to see pedestrian safety improvements. And one of those locations was at the corner of Eckeburn Road and Ipswich Road at Annelie. There is a slip lane there that does not have a safe crossing point across it. You then get to a median and then you can cross part of the road under signalisation. But as we know, slip lanes are incredibly dangerous to pedestrians. And that was one of the recommendations of Move Safe, that council looks at changing their configuration and making sure there are safe crossing points so that people aren't put at risk. And it's really disappointing that council decided not to do that down at the intersection of Cracknell Road and Ipswich Road, where council was actually giving, I think, more clear air for the slip lane rather than pedestrians. And that was my fundamental concern with that project a few weeks ago, that councillor McLoughlin stood up here, stamped his foot and said, I'm cancelling it. And presumably, that's what they did, because I got a memo when I asked about it, I got a memo saying it's been cancelled. You know, I think that it's very disappointing when council is not prepared to take on board constructive criticism about how to fix things. And, you know, I did it again today. You know, put forward a motion about how something could be improved. The Lord Mayor allegedly agrees with me, but he didn't vote for it, because I don't know why. Yep.
To your amendment, please.
Thank you. So the big issue here is that a project was cancelled, fine. That's the decision of councillor McLoughlin on the public record. But that money should be reinvested into another local project in Annelie. Now, we know that council has undertaken the investigation to put a proper safe crossing point across at Eckeburn Road to address the pedestrian safety issues at that location, and that the project has been capital listed. The information in the paper before us today is council officers don't think it's suitable for a zebra crossing. Fair enough, that's a cheaper way of doing it, in my view. So the safest option, of course, is a green walk signal. Now, of the $331,000 left in the budget for the Cracknell Road project that councillor McLoughlin counselled, presumably a chunk of that did go towards planning, but I imagine there's still several hundred thousand dollars left for actual works. Council has done the planning for the safe crossing point at Eckeburn Road, and council has agreed to capital list it. So what this motion does today is to say to the Annelie community that we are listening as a council. It says that the money that council used to counsel this project up the road can be redirected into another important safety project that residents want, that fits with council's policy on what should happen at slip lanes, that will significantly improve safety for residents on my side of Ipswich Road, as well as councillor Griffiths' side of Ipswich Road. It will ensure that money is not wasted, doesn't go off towards buying bus depots or something else, that we don't know what council will do. And it will ensure that one of the items that council says in its own report here today is important can actually be funded. So I think this is absolutely a very simple proposition for council. This money is already allocated for expenditure in Annelie, it's just going to be redirected to another project that would provide an important safety upgrade for our community. So I certainly look forward to other speakers on this matter, and I'd encourage all councillors to vote for the reallocation of funds. It doesn't impact on anybody else's wards other than councillor Griffiths and myself. It's not like we're taking money from anybody else. I know some councillors here today have got millions and millions of dollars for sports fields. You know, councillors here have actually taken hundreds of thousand dollars away from Annelie residents who you have to represent, it's part of your obligation to represent all residents of Brisbane. So this is an important way that you can show them that you're listening and reallocate that funding back to an important safety project just, what, five hundred metres, eight hundred metres up the street? So I just hope all councillors support the amendment.
Further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Griffiths.
Waiting for the chairperson to speak, but it doesn't seem like that's going to happen, he's mentioned in the motion. Look, I just want to say that I totally support this amendment. It is, it makes sense. So the history of this was that there was going to be an upgrade, and it was contained in the budget, to make a longer turning lane from Ipswich Road into Cracknell Road, because currently there's a very short turning lane, and there's a backlog of traffic, and then that causes major delays on Ipswich Road. Seemed like a logical, a logical project that we could do, the road space was there. Transport officers spoke to me about it, I was supportive of it. And it was all, as I was told, it was shovel-ready to go. And then, next thing, it's been cancelled in this chamber by councillor McLoughlin. So I've never had a project where it's listed in the budget, and next thing, a chairperson says, and you're not getting it! Wow. The power that is exercised by people in this chamber is incredible. It was logical for it to happen. The council officers had worked very hard for it. They had presented their case to me, and I had supported the project to go out for consultation. Because you get it out to consultation, then you get your feedback, then you look at what tinkering needs to be done. Well, it never made it that far. And so this money is sitting there now, unused, unspent, and the work isn't done. So we've got delays going on Ipswich Road. This is the opportunity for that money, we're calling for that money to be used in another part of Ipswich Road that we, councillor Johnson and myself both believe needs action, and that is for a safe pedestrian crossing with lights on a fairly major intersection, where there are issues with traffic coming and pedestrians getting across that particular intersection safely. Believe it's really logical, believe it should be done. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed to go out to residents and say that this project has been destroyed by some tantrum that some councillor was having in the chamber. But disappointingly, that's how this administration is working at the moment. And it's probably why their vote is so low in Annelie. Thank you.
Further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Johnson.
Oh dear. Right. So, for those listening at home, the chairperson of council responsible for those-
Councillors.
Yeah, the chairperson of council responsible for this area couldn't even be bothered to stand up and speak to the motion. No doubt, he will stand up in his closing on the committee paper and attack me and councillor Griffiths, which is, in my view, a cowardly way to go about this. He should have the courage and the decency to put on the record why he does not support this, unless I'm wrong, which I don't think, and he's going to vote for it. I really don't suspect that's going to be the case, but, you know, maybe I'll be surprised. So the LMP, who have taken $331,000 away from Annelie residents, and it was councillor David McLoughlin who personally did that in this council chamber a few weeks ago, because he did not like constructive feedback about how to make the project better by including pedestrian safety upgrades. And, you know, it just was astonishing to me that cars were the only thing that was considered in that. There wasn't a safe crossing point, bus stops were moved, children had to cross more side roads, you know. Fourteen hundred and forty-five people crossed the road at that intersection every single day, and yet they didn't seem to be considered. And when I pointed this out to council in my feedback, they came, wrote back to me and said, yep, no, we're not doing anything about it. And I wrote back with my concerns, and then next thing that happens is it comes into here and councillor McLoughlin goes, right, that's it. He just unilaterally cancelled it. Now, he doesn't even have the guts to stand up and say why he won't redirect this funding to another important road safety project in Annelie, one that the council officers support, one that has been capital listed for funding. Which LMP ward is going to get this, get this funding? What project is it going to go to? He doesn't even have the courage to stand up and say that to us. So it is really disappointing to me that the LMP councillors, and in particular the infrastructure chairman, who gets paid extra money to be in charge of this area, doesn't have five minutes to stand up and explain himself to the residents of Annelie about why they don't deserve to have this issue that they have raised over many years, fully debated and considered here in council. And I think that that just shows what the LMP thinks of Annelie residents. They don't care, they're not interested, they couldn't be bothered to address their very serious concerns. Seven hundred people signed a petition calling for road safety improvements. When this matter comes up to this place, on one of the issues they specifically and publicly have asked council for, the LMP could not be bothered to speak to the matter. That, in my view, is appalling behaviour. It just shows the way in which they disrespect Annelie residents and the serious issues that they have raised. So if I'm wrong, I'll stand up and apologize if the LMP vote for this. But, you know, after eleven years, there's only been one motion they've supported, and the usual behaviour is, we say nothing and then we just vote it down. That, in my view, is just appallingly bad behaviour, particularly when you're the person in charge, to not have the courtesy to even explain why you won't. And then, as I suspect will happen, councillor Griffiths, through you, Mr Chairman, councillor McLoughlin will have a go at us in about five minutes.
We'll now put the motion, sorry, the amendment to the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. Noes have it. Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Griffiths, please ring the bells. Okay, all those in favour of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Those against the amendment? Say no. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour and seventeen against.
We'll now return to the infrastructure report. Are there any further speakers? No, councillor McLoughlin? Right, all those in favour of the- Oh, thank you, sorry. My mistake. All those, we'll now put items A and C. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B. All those in favour say aye. Those against? Say no.
Division.
You didn't say no. Oh, okay, fair enough. Division called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cassidy. Ring the bells? Yep. All right, all those in favour of item B say aye. Those against? Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and five abstentions.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Parks and Sustainability Committee. Councillor Davis.
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday the sixteenth of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday the sixteenth of March 2021 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. The committee presentation last week was on invasive species management in Brisbane. We have two park namings and a petition requesting council disconnect the Alice in Wonderland talking posts in Newstead Park, Newstead. I would like to make a few remarks on item C, which is the naming of the bushland at 818 Rhodey Road, Stafford Heights, as Remick Street Bushland Reserve. In speaking about the naming of this bushland, which was acquired by council in 2019, in some ways it feels like we've reached the final milestone in a twenty-year journey to save this parcel of land from development. It's been fought for, been the subject of countless debates, and finally it will be named. I'd like to thank Mr Keith Katz for his petition to name this land as Remick Street Bushland Reserve, which acknowledges the hard work and dedication of the Save Remick Street Bushland Group. I hope that everyone who worked so tirelessly to preserve this bushland will see the new reserve sign, stop and smile, and think, I helped make this happen. I'm humbled to have had the opportunity to work alongside such a passionate local community to make the preservation- to make the preservation of this bushland reality, and I look forward to it being named in honour of the locals who played such a significant role in achieving this outcome. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Are there further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just would ask that item D is taken seriously item for voting.
Item D for voting, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yep. And I was just going to speak to item D. This petition is about the Alice in Wonderland playground at Newstead, in Newstead Park. The petition contains 10 signatures, so these 10 people have a lot of power. Given we just had a petition with 700 signatures and got no action on it. These people are getting what they want. These people... They're in Nelham P Ward, that's right. These people, there's a wonderful playground there, it's a whimsical park, based on the theme of Alice in Wonderland. And it's quite enchanting, if you have children, to see the different characters. Very well done park, probably done when David Hinchcliffe was the councillor for the area. But it is quite a wonderful little park. But part of the park has these talking poles that convey messages that fit with the Alice in Wonderland theme. They work from 8am to 5.30pm, Mondays to Fridays. Now, it seems that some of the 10 local residents don't want these... They don't want these noisy kids around, they don't want this magical whimsical park to be working. So they want these devices to be turned off and not maintained. And I just think it's just incredible what this council responds to. So if you read any of the reviews of this park online, it has really wonderful reviews. And part of what people say is a wonderful experience is these talking poles. So once again, it's the maze, it's a whole range of things that people find enchanting about this park. And our solution to these 10 people who complained is we'll turn them off and we'll make sure they don't work again. Really? That's how we deal with magic? That's how we deal with a whimsical playground? We turn it off? It's unbelievable. I just think it's really sad that... Yes, why doesn't someone think of the children? And once again, it's in councillor McLaughlin's ward. And councillor McLaughlin's very good at getting resources in his ward, but he couldn't get resources to keep this going. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Adamant?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item B in support of the submission to rename the Rebecca Street Park Chapel Hill in honour of the Penn Halligan family. I was first approached some months ago by a local resident, Bev Walker, a descendant of the Penn Halligan family, who together with Judy Magub, the president of the Kenmore District Historical Society, made representations for this recognition to occur. After being briefed on the Penn Halligan family's association over many years with this part of my ward that included the Rebecca Street Park, it seemed a no-brainer. But as the Shrinna administration always does with such matters, we first sought the views of the local community and a comfortable majority of respondents supported the idea. Deputy Chair, the Penn Halligan family were early settlers in the local area and owned the land on which the Kenmore Plaza and Kenmore Tavern stand today. William Henry Penn Halligan from Cornwall, England, and his wife of German parents first settled an area from Chapel Hill Road along Moghl Road through to the current Montessori School in the early 1880s. Their 48 hectare property, Rosedale, was a dairy farm with poultry, a pigery and a slaughterhouse. William and his brother John also had property where the Kenmore Anglican Church now stands on Moghl Road, where they broke in horses for the horse-drawn trams. William was also secretary of the Kenmore Racing Club, an active member of the Kenmore School Committee and served for many years on the Interpolie Shire Council. William and Christina raised four sons and five daughters. Four other children died in infancy and are buried in the Chapel Hill Cemetery. Their eldest son, William, was part of the first contingent to the Boer War in 1899, while their youngest son, Sidney, was killed at Gallipoli. William died in 1935, but Rosedale continued to operate as a dairy farm until it was sold to a private buyer after World War Two for £2,000. Our deputy chair, in conclusion, the contribution of our forbears in the development of a modern and free country we enjoy today must never be forgotten. Through the renaming of this park, residents in my ward will have the opportunity to appreciate and understand the history of this special part of Chapel Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I will rise to speak briefly on item D. And look, it's a shame when something that was installed some 20 years ago and to councillor Griffiths, it was when my predecessor, Tim Nichols, was the councillor. And it just shows you the paucity of the ALP's dirt unit. They haven't uncovered the photo that I've seen of Tim wearing a Mad Hatter's outfit, including the Mad Hatter's hat, as he opened this display over 20 years ago when he was the councillor just after 2000. But, look, it was a project that was initiated by the historian, the late historian, David Gibson, and then became part of the ward when I became the councillor in 2006. It's always been problematic in terms of the equipment there. And that's one of the problems with bespoke equipment, is that there's... Our parks officers can't always maintain items that are made specifically for a particular location when they can't get materials that were made some 20 years ago. And that's, I gather, the problem with the equipment here. It fails to stop at five o'clock, it continues to operate at night during the rain. That's why the residents put in the petition. If it could be fixed, fantastic. The officers have advised that it's extremely difficult, if not impossible, to fix. Hence, the residents across the road concerned about it, hence their petition, hence the decision that's been made. And here we are. If it could be fixed, that'd be great, but apparently it can't be.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? Councillor Davis? We'll now put... Oh, sorry, councillor Johnson?
Yes, just briefly on the talking posts in Newstead Park. I listened to what councillor McLaughlin just said then. Presumably he's got hundreds of thousands of dollars in his trust funds. And, you know, like we have to do in wards where we don't get capital funding for new parks, you've got to use your trust funds to fix stuff. So I guess my question would be, why hasn't councillor McLaughlin replaced them if they can't be fixed? And I, you know, it just seems a little bit sad to me that something that's quite distinctive and unusual, whimsical, thank you councillor Griffiths, is being removed and not replaced. And I would have thought that that's something a councillor could do very easily with their trust funds.
Councillor Davis? We'll now put items A, B and C of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. We'll now put item D. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it.
Division? Division?
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Okay, we are voting on item D of the report. All those in favour, raise your hand, say aye. Those against? Clarks, please read the result when you are ready.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we'll now move on to City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee. Councillor Marks?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before I get to the report, I just want to mention a couple of things. One was the, there's questions on notice that were printed out today with regard to my portfolio regarding footpath maintenance. One of the questions was, please list all open footpath maintenance works identified but not yet completed, including the total length of footpath in that street. Now, the table there says the street, the suburb, the total length of footpath in the ward. I just want to clarify, we have not put in the total length of the footpath of that whole street, because obviously some streets might have, you know, be a kilometre long and have a kilometre footpath. That's not the amount of footpath that needs repairing. So we just want to clarify that that is... So specific details on the length are not recorded, but assumptions are being made to find the average length of the footpath for repair. This includes a footpath width of 1,200 millimetres. The average length of footpath repair is 16.7 metres. So we just wanted to clarify that and make sure that everyone was aware that obviously it's not the whole length of a footpath that needs to be... Sorry?
Councillor Strunk? Thank you. Councillor Marks, please continue.
Anyway, okay, I just, anyway. The other thing I wanted to do was pass on congratulations to councillor Mackay and his staff on a very successful opening of the new community garden and composting hub they had on the Sunday morning. It was a great event, it went ahead and the here was commitment was rain, hail or shine, given that the first event that was planned was cancelled during a COVID. I have to say, I had made the commitment that I would go out to that event on the Sunday morning, even though it's my church day. And it was fine where I live, and I thought, okay, so it's definitely going. I went ahead, I couldn't say, look, it's pouring with rain, I'm not coming. But anyway, it was fine, so I got up, went across there. It was pouring with rain over there. You could see the rain as you were driving to the city and it got closer and closer. It was actually hosing down. But I have to say, I was extremely impressed by how many people had still attended. I'd missed the majority of the crowd. Church was a bit late starting. So by the time I got there, there wasn't quite as many people as there had been, but certainly there was a lot of people there. I was very, very impressed. And I also put a shout out to the council officers within the WARS team who facilitate these events on our behalf. As far as today's, last week's committee report goes, we talked about supporting businesses in compliance and regulatory services. And there was one petition which I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? No standing, councillor Marks? We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. We will now move on to Community Arts Nighttime Economy Committee. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that...
My pleasure, as always.
I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landis that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. We had a committee presentation about the Brisbane Asia Festival, both 2020 and 2021. And it's fantastic to see how this particular festival grows year by year. And it's also wonderful to see that it is being taken to the suburbs. So last year it was at Aspli and this year it was at the Sunnybank Village Precinct Project, or one of the events, sorry. There's a whole number of events that are held. So some of the highlights were the Brisbane Asia Bazaar, the Holy Festival of Colours, and of course, it's attended by more and more people each year. So it really was something that the committee was very interested in, in learning about the changes that have happened like in 2020 and 2021. And so I just would like to commend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Is there any speakers on this, other speakers on this report? No? No, councillor Howard? All right, we'll now put the committee report. All those in favour and say aye. Those against? The ayes have it. Finance Administration and Small Business Committee. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 16th of March 2021 be adopted. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had an update on the Economic Recovery Task Force and in particular, the Economic Recovery Plan details how council is partnering with different businesses, industry groups, community groups and residents to ensure Brisbane is back on track as quickly as possible. The plan can be accessed via the council website and comprises over 80 actions which are tracked via council's website, including 24 completed initiatives, 48 active initiatives, and they are ones that are happening now, 14 in-progress initiatives and include some of our larger projects such as Brisbane Metro. The plan will be implemented in three phases, and that is relief, reboot and recovery. The relief initiatives, which is phase one, aim to provide immediate relief. And this is really much about the quick response that we undertook when COVID first hit. And some of the initiatives under the relief plan include 7.9 million in business relief, in the business relief package, $5,000 grants to sports clubs on council land to assist with watering fields, rates deferrals and payment plans for those experiencing hardship due to COVID-19 and continuing councils' buy local procurement policy. Moving on to phase two, which is the reboot initiatives, this included things such as the six-month rate fees, rate freeze for all rate payers, $4.5 million package to waive rents and reimbursements for council lesses and tenants, waiving of a range of fees and charges for businesses until the end of December 2020, $3 million in direct assistance for community groups on council land, $21.7 million in a package of projects that each ward was able to initiate and additionally rates rebates to eligible first homeowners, not-for-profit organisations, pensioners and job seeker recipients. The final phase is the recovery phase or recovery initiatives, and those are some of the larger projects which will have a longer term delivery horizon, and they include Victoria Park, Brisbane Metro and the Green Bridges projects. There are a number of council initiatives that have been completed and they include things such as the review of the Brisbane, the Better Brisbane Proposals Initiative, the funding we secured from the federal government for our local roads and community infrastructure programme, the provision of additional business liaison officers to conduct face-to-face engagement with businesses across Brisbane. The key projects that we've got on the horizon that will come up shortly include the Brisbane Business Summit to be held on the 21st of April 2021, the launch of suburban business hubs and a number of key events and workshops which are conducted through the Brisbane Business Hub. In addition to the presentation, we had a regular report, the Bank and Investment Report for January 2021, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Allen? I'll now put the report. All those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cumming?
Sorry.
There you go.
I'm sorry. I have two petitions, one soft copy, one hard copy, about the parking spaces in Bay Terrace, Winham.
Councillor Howling?
I have a petition requesting council consider the Strawberry Fields Parklands project to create green space and economic growth in Fortitude Valley.
Councillor Allen?
Mr Chair, I have a petition requesting council investigate the surface repairs recently completed at the Nunda Criterium Circuit, Headley Avenue, Nunda, and make appropriate repairs.
Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair. I have a petition requesting council investigate traffic calming measures along Green Camp Road, Wakely to reduce speeding, hooning and disruption to residents.
Any other petitions? Any other petitions? I myself have a petition from residents of Inglewood asking for further drainage work in parts of their streets. May I please have a motion to receive them?
Mr Chair, I, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Strunk. The petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee? There is not. Are there any matters of general business? Anyone?
Yes.
Councillor Maddock.
Oh, Mr Chairman. This being, this being the last meeting for a while, I had to take this opportunity to, to follow in the footsteps of my colleagues who have in previous meetings discussed the wonder and achievements of the Shriner administration in its first year. And I could not pass this opportunity to just briefly mention one particular item. And of course, Mr Chairman, I could wax lyrical for the full ten minutes in regards to all of the achievements in my ward of the, of the, of the Shriner administration because, I don't know if you're aware, Mr Chairman, but all the councils on this side of the chamber have all the skills and abilities to run events and also to organise different functions, Mr Chairman. It's not a skill that only some councils on the other side have. But the one thing I really want to talk about, Mr Chairman, was a magnificent mural that sits on Latrobe Terrace. And if you're driving up through there, please go and have a look at it, it's on the corner of Cochrane Street. As part of an initiative to really energise and raise the, the profile of the terraces, we were able to get some funding from our federal member, Trevor Evans. And working together as a community, we painted this huge mural on the side of Blake and Taylor, and Ellie, the owner, was very generous. Melissa Simmons is the artist and also a building owner. And what it is, it's a mural of the rolling hills of Paddington and all of the tin and timber, done in vibrant colours. Mr Chairman, if there's one thing that I really, really want to always feel strongly about is art. Because art is one of those things that defines us, it expresses our character, it gives us something to share, it gives us hope. And during a period of COVID when we've had so many struggles, particularly in the business sector, this mural did so much to raise the hopes of the, of the community and brought people together. So this administration continues to deliver for communities, for businesses and for residents, Mr Chairman, in so many different ways. And I'm proud to be able to present and, and to, to represent the interests of all those in Paddington Ward.
For further general business, there being none, I declare the meeting closed. Good night, everybody.